The June 25, 2025 meeting of the Greenville County Planning Commission is hereby called to order. At today's meeting, we will review rezoning applications, subdivision applications, and other items brought to us by staff. Unless the commission members have a question for the applicant, we will not accept additional public comment on the rezoning applications. The rezoning cases were presented at a public hearing, and that was the opportunity to hear public comments in favor of or opposition to the rezoning cases. You're about done. At today's meeting, the commission will be making its recommendation on the rezoning cases. Detailed information on each of the cases was provided to us in our electronic agenda package in advance of this meeting. Our recommendations will be forwarded to County Council's Planning and Development Committee for their consideration and decision. The subdivision matters we will review today have been reviewed by the Subdivision Advisory Committee. At that meeting, the reviewing agencies presented their preliminary findings to staff. Based upon the comments received at the Subdivision Advisory Committee meeting, and after review of the applicable ordinance sections, staff has formulated contingencies for the preliminary plats. Anyone wishing to address the commission on subdivision matters should have signed up to speak. Again, you cannot address the commission during this meeting on rezoning request. The official public hearing on these cases has already been held. I'd like to welcome everybody today, and welcome our new planning commissioners, Mr. Matasevic. Wow, okay. Mr. Parham.
First time.
And our new vice chairman, Ms. Manning. All right, Mr. Holland's gonna do the invocation for us.
All right, let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we just ask your blessings on this meeting this afternoon. Be with the commission as we hear and listen and absorb the information that we are gonna have presented to us tonight, and help us to make good recommendations to our county council. Be with everyone in this audience. Bring them home safely after this meeting, and just help us to continue to make Greenville County the best county in the state of South Carolina. We pray these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. The minutes from our last month's meeting, anybody have any revisions, comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
Mr. Holland made a motion to approve our minutes, and Ms. Phillips has a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, zoning.
Good afternoon. This is a brief explanation of the planning commission process to consider rezoning cases. Each docket will be presented, including the requested zoning, specific details of the site, as well as maps and photos of the site and surrounding area. Presentation will conclude with the staff recommendation. Staff recommendation is a result of feedback from a team of internal and external county stakeholders who review each case. After each presentation, the planning commission may either vote with or against staff's recommendation in addition to offering any additional amendments to the recommendation. All items forwarded from today's meeting will be heard by the Planning and Development Committee in person in the committee meeting room in the North Building, which is scheduled for July 14, 2025 at 5:00 p.m. Our first docket tonight is CZ-2025-038. Property is located at 280 Rock Road in Greer. The applicant is Louis Paul Young. The 5.241 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately .61 miles southeast of the intersection of Batesville Road and Pelham's Fall Drive, and currently contains vacant land. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is zoned RS Residential Suburban District and PD Plan Development District. The request is for AG Agricultural Preservation District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states their proposed land use is single-family residential and agricultural. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that a successful rezoning to AG Agricultural Preservation District would not be consistent with the Plan Greenville County Comprehensive Plan designation of suburban neighborhood, nor would it meet the intent of the AG Agricultural Preservation District, which was created to preserve prime farmland and forestry areas. Additionally, the proposed land use of single-family residential and agricultural crops or trees are already permitted in the current RS Residential Suburban zoning district. Based on these reasons, staff recommends denial of the requested rezoning to AG Agricultural Preservation District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any questions for staff, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for staff, just to clarify. The applicant stated his desire was to plant vegetables, plants, and sell them to local nurseries. Is that something that, on a small scale, can be done without an agricultural zoning?
So, in the current RS zoning district, you can have certain agricultural uses. You can have agricultural crops and trees. You can have commercial nurseries and greenhouses. You can't have on-site retail or farm stands or things like that that would bring people to the site, though.
Okay. Okay. And I'd like to make a comment. This is in my neighborhood, well, neighborhood, my area, and I'm familiar with this location. And I drove by, and I was astounded. I'm not even sure how crops can be planted here.
Lot of rock, isn't it?
Um, this soil has been stripped. You'd have to have raised beds to plant anything. It'd be great for our community. As much as it's grown, we've got too many gas stations as it is, but I agree with staff's decision, and I would make a motion to recommend denial.
All righty, Ms. Phillips made a motion to deny.
I'll second.
Ms. Manning's got you beat.
I'm not quick enough today.
I do. About six, seven years ago, then Councillor Rick Roberts hauled me out here on a Sunday morning and said, "Look at this. What can we do?" And I said, "Well, there's so much rock here, you can't do a whole lot." So I tend to agree with staff. Any other comments besides mine? All in favor to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes got it.
The next docket is CZ-2025-040. The property is located at 593 Old Huntsbridge Road in Greenville. The applicant is Herbert Edward Mercer III of H. Edward Mercer LLC. The 1.48 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately .58 miles southeast of the intersection of Old Huntsbridge Road and Old McIlhenny Road, and currently contains a vacant structure. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is zoned S1 Services District. The request is for RS Residential Suburban District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states their proposed land use is single-family residential. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that a successful rezoning to RS Residential Suburban District would not create an adverse impact on surrounding properties. It's consistent with the surrounding zoning districts and would permit uses that are consistent with the Plan Greenville County Comprehensive Plan designation of suburban edge. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning to RS Residential Suburban District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the approval, the staff's approval.
Okay. Ms. Manning made a motion to approve.
I'll second.
That's who?
I said Franklin.
No, you didn't. You said Manning. I'm sorry.
You don't look like it. The, um, Mr. Holland has a second. Sorry, it's gonna be a long night.
It's the heat.
It's the heat. All in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Sorry.
Next docket, CZ-2025-041. Property is located at 20 Old Augusta Road Extension and Augusta Road in Piedmont. The applicant is Robert Mitchell Gunter of River Rock Engineering LLC for DAM Moonville LLC. The 2.98 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately .29 miles south of the intersection of Augusta Road, Highway 25, and the I-185 interchange, and currently contains vacant land. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is zoned C1 Commercial District and C2 Commercial District. The request is for S1 Services District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states their proposed land use is RV and boat storage. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that a successful rezoning to S1 Services District would be consistent with the Plan Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, which designates the parcel as Mixed Employment Center, and the South Greenville Area Plan, which designates the parcel as Commercial. Additionally, the requested zoning district is consistent with the zoning districts north and east of the parcel, and staff feels this would not create an adverse impact on the surrounding parcels. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning to S1 Services District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for staff or a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
All right, Mr. Wood has a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
I'm gonna give one to Mr., I've been practicing Matasevic.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Next docket, CZ-2025-042. Property is located on Old Bramlet Road in Greenville. The applicant is Tricia Chason for Four Star USA Real Estate Group. The 121.7 acre subject property consists of one parcel and is located approximately .18 miles west of the intersection of West Blue Ridge Drive and Old Bramlet Road, and currently contains a single-family residential development under construction. This is the zoning of the surrounding area. Subject property outlined here is zoned FRD Flexible Review District. The request is for FRD MC Flexible Review District Major Change and RMA Multifamily Residential District. You can also see the surrounding property zones. The applicant states their proposed land use is single-family residential. The applicant is proposing to modify the existing development boundary in order to transfer a small portion of property to a neighbor. An approximate 0.04 acre portion of the review district would be rezoned to RMA Multifamily Residential District before being deeded over to an adjacent property owner. No other changes are proposed to the existing requirements established under the statement of intent for the development. This is the subject site and photo showing the area surrounding the subject site. Staff is of the opinion that a successful rezoning to FRD MC Flexible Review District Major Change and RMA Multifamily Residential District would not have a negative impact on the pre-established requirements of the review district, nor would it have an adverse impact on the surrounding area. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning to FRD MC Flexible Review District Major Change and RMA Multifamily Residential District. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Baxley. Commissioners, comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this as submitted.
All right.
I'll second.
Mr. Holland made a motion to approve for staff's recommendation. Ms. Phillips has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right.
Next docket is CZ-2025-044, which is to amend Article 8, Section 851 ESAD PM Environmental Extensive District, Paris Mountain, and Tent of the Greenville County Zoning Ordinance. Shown in red and struck through is the current wording of Section 851. The proposed amendment would replace the current wording with the text shown in black. Here you see an aerial image of the ESAD PM boundary. Here you see the ESAD PM zoning and the zoning of the surrounding area. Staff is of the opinion that proposed change would refocus the purpose behind the ESAD PM zoning classification and could help guide future review of Paris Mountain. Based on these reasons, staff recommends approval of the proposed text amendment. Mr. Chairman.
Did we not approve this already?
So, the previous amendment was to remove Section 85, or Section 8?
Section 85.
858, which was the section that stated that you could revert a parcel out of Paris Mountain. So that was the previous amendment to strike that section of PND ordinance.
And this is an afterthought?
This is a separate amendment to just the intent section of ESAD PM.
Okay. Well, that answers that. All right, commissioners, gonna get a motion?
I've got a question.
All righty, Ms. Phillips.
Or a statement and a question. I'm not sure that the verbiage is tightening up the intent like a lot of residents expect. However, I'm in favor of, you know, improving all this. Can we send this to PND with a recommendation, then they might look at more detail?
So, I will say that there is another text amendment that will be going to the July rezoning public hearing for the Paris Mountain section, and in that amendment, it again revises this same section. So, there may be additional text in that that, again, sort of refocuses or retitans this intent section.
Okay.
Apparently, it's a new hobby.
A little at a time, you know, small wins. I make a motion, we approve. I recommend approval.
All right. Ms. Phillips made a motion to approve. Mr. Parham has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Nano. All right, give us a few minutes to switch staff before we start on subdivisions. Anytime you ready, Miss State.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is PP 2025-75, Rock Springs. Rock Springs is a proposed Cluster Option 1 subdivision located adjacent to the intersection of Stallings Road and Reed School Road. The applicant is requesting 21 lots on 11.42 acres for a density of 1.83, oh, there we go, okay, for a density of 1.83 units per acre. Access is provided off of Stallings Road, which is a state road. The site is split zoned with nine units on the 6.47 acre R12 zone portion for a density of 1.39 units per acre within this area, and 12 units in the 4.95 acre RM20 zone portion for a density of 2.42 units within this area. Both areas of the site are proposed to meet the density requirements of their respective zoning districts. Here is the site outlined in red, and here is Stallings Road looking northeast and southwest. Here is the site plan that was submitted in your packets. The project includes one ingress egress point, three internal roads, one cluster mailbox area in the cul-de-sac with a pet waste station, 20-foot undisturbed screening buffers around the perimeter of the site, 50-foot riparian buffers, two detention ponds, .31 linear miles of new public road, and 4.83 acres of open space. 1.71 acres are required. Here is the zoning of the site. The subject site is a part of the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, where it is designated as suburban edge. Suburban edges are low-density areas that offer opportunities for low-intensity development that is well-integrated with the natural landscape and agricultural uses. Suburban edge character area types recommend a density of 0 to 1 dwelling units per acre. Rock Springs proposes a density of 1.83 units per acre. Here is the site and across the street from the site. And all SAC comments were addressed at the resubmital. Staff recommends approval with conditions of the plan with the standard and specific requirements. The conditions of approval are as follows. One, meet any SCDOT requirements. If changes are required by SCDOT, provide a revised preliminary plan with these changes shown. Two, provide a preliminary plan by July 1, 2025 that revises the development table to show the correct number of lots per each zoning district. Mr. Chairman.
All righty. We're gonna let the opposition speak first. You have a total of 10 minutes. You can take it all or share it with the others. Benita Merkel.
Thank you, commissioners.
What scared me?
My name is Benita Merkel, a resident and representative of Oak Branch Estates. I live at 307 Silver Limb Lane, and we ask that you unanimously deny this application for the following concerns. Is the overdevelopment of the area a violation of the county's comprehensive plan and our area's designated character type of suburban edge? Is the overdevelopment of the area ignoring the 91% of Greenville County voters who express concern over the green space laws according to the April survey taken by the Community Foundation of Greenville and the Greenville County Historic and Natural Resources Trust? Is the current Rock Springs preliminary plat in violation of the same lagged regs as the plat application denied last October, especially with regards to open space? Can proper storm management, especially from the Oak Branch Detention Pond B, be constructed and not be in violation of disturbing the required 20-foot undisturbed barrier? Occasionally, residents have heard heavy machinery operating on the property, causing us to question the lawfulness of possible activity. County GIS images of 2025 show a silt barrier around the wetlands. Is the barrier encroaching upon the wetlands? Are they properly flagged? Due to Hurricane Helene, should an environmental study be requested before allowing further disturbance of the property? Blue Line Environmental Study, done in August 2024, recommends a site visit from the Army Corps of Engineers to determine the actual extent of the wetlands. Has that visit occurred? Most importantly, the parcels were zoned in 1972. The wetlands are environmentally sensitive areas and are part of the already compromised Mountain Creek area that is currently being evaluated in the Mountain Creek zoning overlay. Therefore, we request rezoning the wetlands parcel from RM20 down to R12, that that would be initiated, and that the commission deny any future applications for cluster developments on any of these three parcels. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Jason Greer.
My name is Jason Greer, and I'm Monarch Place, part of the Wedgewood Place subdivision, representing homeowners there. We're speaking primarily about two issues, and the first we have concerned is erosion. The property is a natural bowl with a spring that comes out, and the drainage for about 15, 16 homeowners. We do have concerns about erosion that could come down and funnel down from that property as construction and as perhaps later water runoff through major storm events comes. We have concerns that if these things aren't mitigated, total erosion in a 10-year, 24-hour storm could yield 11,800 tons of silt per a U.S. Department of Agriculture study. Another concern we have is traffic. Our neighborhood has two outlets on Stallings Road. This would have one, and looking north from our neighborhood would have, towards the Reed School Road intersection, this would have one outlet, and it's a bit of a blind curve. So, traffic through the area, as I'm sure you know, the last few years, as more developments come, has really picked up on this road. And so, we're concerned about one outlet that's bringing in more traffic that we can't see. So, for that, in consideration of potential Mountain Creek overlay, potential, considering there's a spring that's part of the Mountain Creek waterways, we'd ask for your consideration about that. Thank you.
All righty. Next speaker in opposition is Brent, and I'm not gonna even try.
Is someone?
You're not Brent?
No, I'm not Brent.
Oh, it's Brenda. Jeez.
Can't read my writing? That makes sense. It's okay.
No wonder you're standing up there, okay. Name and address, please.
Okay. Brenda Bucick, 200 Barrow Way, Taylors, and I'm here to express the community opposition to this development. Rock Springs was presented to you as Patriot Place last year. Once, it was denied 5 to 3, and the last was withdrawn. Now, they present with a name change, but not much change in the plot. To quote the minutes from the last meeting, Chairman Bickle stated he could not support application due to the land labeled as developable, that is not suited for development. No meaningful proportions and violations of LDR 1.1, 1.11, 1.11.2, and 1.11.4. I present to you the same concerns as in the last application. 11.1, 11.4, a lot of open space is drawn in, but the large area in the middle of the development, adjacent to Lot 15, has slopes of anywhere from 0 to 30%. The open space behind the lots on Stallings Road is not safe without fencing. Stallings is a 45 mile-per-hour road with very busy traffic. Some of the homes can also, can only access the open space by crossing streets within the development. Lots 18, 6, 7, and 8 have limited access. 11.2, trees are not marked. While a 20-foot undisturbed buffer is indicated, no mention is made of existing trees in that buffer. LDR 8.21 requires that viable trees must be left in the buffer for both landscaping and, landscaped and undisturbed buffers. The developer has not specified what will be in the buffer, except to say it is undisturbed. Community concerned, this development will exit onto Stallings Road, which is a north-south feeder that intersects Reed School Road close to the entrance of Rock Springs. In the period of 2019 to the present, 590 new residents have been added to that 2.1-mile strip on Reed School Road with an approximate 966 additional trips per day. In addition, Spinks built a convenience store at the intersection of Reed School Road and Wade Hampton, which requires customers to exit onto Reed School Road to go north on Wade Hampton. Both Stallings Road, with an SCDOT rated F intersection, and Reed School Road are famously crowded. These are major access to Rock Springs. A zoning overlay is being constructed for the entire Mountain Creek area, which proposes a ban on cluster development in that area, including Rock Springs. The basis of this overlay is the damage that has been done to the creek in almost 50 years of development, which has resulted in major flooding amongst the homes in the area. From a neighborhood perspective, as already mentioned, it is a suburban edge, and the increased density of cluster development is also destroying the character of the neighborhood. We ask that you cast your vote to oppose this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bucick. All right, that's all in opposition. So, in favor, Austin Allen? You know the 10-minute stuff.
Austin Allen, Arbor Land Design, 49 Greenland Drive, Greenville, 29615. As stated a couple times in opposition, this project was before you back in October of last year. It was denied. Several plan changes have happened between now and then. First and foremost, the reduction of two lots, the addition of a little over half an acre in open space, and the site layout really did change. Not as much on the front end, but on the back end. If you remember, on the back end, what we had is we had a double-loaded road that ended in a cul-de-sac. What you ended up with is more of the lots were not directly adjacent to the open space that does exist on-site. With this site layout, we flipped the road to the high point of the property. We affronted as many lots as we can to what is going to be open space, and we've made sure we've, or we've tried our best to provide access to those lots that are not directly adjacent to open space to a clear path to that open space. Open space was, was a big discussion then, and I'm sure it will be tonight. One thing that I would like to make note of that, that I don't think should be taken lightly is, is the open space that is provided. Right now, based off the acreage and the zoning classification, the open space that is required to be provided on the site is 1.7 acres. In just the wetlands, the streams, the buffers associated with, we've got a In just the wetlands, the streams, the buffers associated with, we've got a total of 2.435 acres of open space. That comes out to, to just a little over 21% of the property. That's not nonsubstantial. That is meaningful. It's a big part of the property, and ultimately, it protects those wetlands for, forever. In terms of the area, you know, this is a developed area. This is an infill project, and this is how these infill projects typically look. They're, they're always left behind, they're passed over, and they're very difficult to resolve. I do think we've, we've listened to the comment, we've responded in the best way that we can that still provides my client with, with ultimately what he needs to get out of this property to make it viable. An adjacent subdivision was, was brought up, Oak Branch Estates. As staff stated, our proposed density is 1.3 units per acre. The Oak Branch Estates is developed at 2.3 units per acre. In addition to that, Northbrook Village, across the road from them, and this, sorry, I meant to lead with, in regard to the future land use map, the Oak Branch Estates shares the same designation we do. Right across the road is open space designation for that area. It has apartments, and it has townhomes. So, we are not in out-of-line in anything that we are trying to do with this area. I believe I've, I've addressed everything that I've wanted to bring up at this point. I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you all have.
Any questions for the engineer? Ms. Manning?
I'm, I'm a little bit confused here. This is a designated area as a suburban edge, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Recommended density is zero to one units per acre, and now Rock Springs is sitting at 1.83 per acre?
Yes, ma'am. Could we bring up the aerial map, please?
How does that mathematically work?
Well, it, it doesn't. And, you know, the, the future land use map and the comprehensive plan is advisory. The way that I look at this is, is when you look at aerial on GIS and all the surrounding developments, below, even a little bit over on top of Reed School, and everything below, none of which is developed to that classification or recommendation. So, and, and a lot of that, actually, probably the majority of that development happened before that comprehensive plan came out.
So, you're saying that this is only advisory, zero to one units per acre, that we should, we should ignore that? You're at 1.83 per acre. How many units would you have to reduce to go down to, to be in compliance with one unit per acre?
I mean, I'd have to go down to 11 units.
From how many units currently?
21.
Is that your only question?
That's my only question.
All righty. Any other questions for the engineer?
I have a couple of questions.
Ms. Phillips?
There are locations, preserved wetlands, no access. How, I'm just curious, how are they not going to be accessed?
I'd love to know that answer, too. And, and that kind of goes to a point that I'd like to make about the others.
Or does that mean none? They won't have any construction or activity on them?
I'll let staff answer that part of the question. But if I could build on that before they do, I would appreciate it. So, and I've always struggled with this, because growing up as a kid, if I lived in one of these houses, what would the first thing I would do?
You're going to go play?
I'd go out to that creek, I'd build forts and have mudball fights with my friends. So, you know, that's, that's kind of the way that I look at it, that, you know, in addition to the preservation of the wetlands, that it is valuable and meaningful. But let you all take it.
So, those labels come directly from an SEC comment that I've been adding, because the ordinance specifically says that those areas with wetlands specifically should be labeled and signed in the, with a sign also in the field, as well as on the plan.
Okay.
That says preserved area, no access. So, the idea is that you would keep out of the wetlands.
So, what, how do we enforce that?
I don't think that there's, I mean.
I got you.
It, the idea is that the signage and the labeling on the plat would, would detour anybody from.
Just for recourse.
Oh. So, there are no requirements for the developer to put signs, fences, to keep people out?
I mean, they have their requirements for, you know, for construction.
Right.
All of the silt fencing requirements, et cetera, that, that do get inspected by land development officials.
But after the fact?
There's a sign, and, and I mean, I guess you could report to, to staff to have us come out and inspect that they've been preserved.
Okay.
But beyond that, there's not additional, you know, surveillance of the site from at least the county's point of view.
Okay. It's residents, just paying attention and hopefully taking care of it.
Yeah, and you'd hope that the HOA is also doing their part to maintain, because it, it is their responsibility.
Okay.
When it comes down to it.
Okay. Are there any existing trees, large vegetation, in any of the undisturbed areas noted on the plat?
Not noted on the plat. There is a good bit of, there is a good bit of canopy cover. I think we need to, as soon as we get past this point, we need to jump in and do a tree protection plan pretty, or a tree inventory pretty quickly, because same, if you look at the GIS current mapping, I think Helene did a good bit of damage to the top side of that. You can see a bunch of trees, but it's kind of hard to tell what's what right now based off the aerial.
Is that not required at this point? Megan?
Not at this point, but a tree protection plan will be required with the grading permit phase.
Okay.
And additionally, because we have a county arborist now, the county arborist will be going on-site to ensure that those trees are actually there and labeled correctly on-site.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for you.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
There's been a question in the past on developable area and the requirement that 50% of the developable area be open space. Do you want to comment on that?
You know, this is, this is not on the plan, but I'll give you a little bit of something. It's, it's all I have. The, if you look at, I guess, one of which we've provided at MEAT Code, but if you look at lots 15 and 14, there's a label back there that says developable open space, .69 acres passive open space. The intent of the way this would be engineered is really lots 15, or excuse me, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17 would, would need to be basement lots. So, what that's going to do is that's going to provide an opportunity for us to flatten out that area where it's, where it's kind of already steeper, make it more usable. You're not having a big wall in the back. We're, we're still in the process of, of trying to work through a builder on this, but the intent is to do, you know, some sort of amenity, something in that area.
So, that the 50% area could be met?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is that it?
Yes.
And then, where would you access that?
Through the 20-foot open space access between 12 and 13, or, I mean, you could really do it on the sewer easement as well.
Well, I'm still hung up on the definition of developable in the zoning ordinance, is land that you can build on, and not all this you can build on. I got a question for staff. Can the repairing buffer and the wetlands be counted as open space?
Yes, again.
Wetlands. No, I think she's right.
Are you sure?
Let's just.
Again, a change in UDO. Don't say UDO.
Any other questions for the engineers? Does this other gentleman want to speak?
I do. So, what we're saying is, according to the table, the required developable open space is not granted? I mean, it's not provided?
Megan, did you hear that?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We were taking a look at the ordinance, just to clarify.
Okay. According to the table, the required amount of developable, developable open space is not provided?
Let me zoom in on this, so I can look at what you're looking at. So, so the point, you're, you're asking if the .856 is provided?
Yeah, the heat's not, the heat's making my brain work slow. I'm trying to validate that. Never mind. I answered my question. Okay. Thank you.
Areas to be wholly preserved such as wetlands, endangered species, habitat, blah, 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 shall be identified as preserved area, no access on the plans.
Yes, however.
Well, no access doesn't exactly lend itself to open space for recreation.
Yeah, I think, I think that that wording is probably limiting towards the intent of open space. However, there is a section within the ordinance within LDR 8.21 that says that wetlands may be overlaid within the 20-foot buffer, and the 20-foot buffer may then be counted as open space. So, that, that leads to an understanding that wetlands can be counted as open space.
Or is that wet lens in the buffer?
But that means that those wetlands, there is no other distinguish that wetlands cannot be counted, so.
Okay.
The implication there is that that means that wetlands can be.
What'd you say, 8.2?
8.21.
And the, and the, the purpose of the open space in cluster development, a lot of times, is to preserve those sensitive areas. I understand that.
It really should be a beautiful area when it's all, and there's so, going to be so much open space in there, you know, like you mentioned, you know, there's a spring, and I, I like to go down there and look at it. It's a beautiful area. My name's Matt King. I am the developer of the property.
Address?
116 White Ash Drive, Asheville, North Carolina, 28803.
All right. Thank you.
And basically, all I wanted to mention was, you know, we, we came in and we listened to what you said when we got denied last October, and tried to just, you know, go back and, you know, we lost two lots and tried to make the best out of what we had. Based on the, the comments we got with you, you know, last time, we were, thought we had met all those requests you had for us.
Miss State, 8.21 just deals with the buffer.
But there is a section within it that mentions that the wetlands can be included. And I'm looking at one other section that might also support this information.
Any other questions for the engineer or the developer? Commissioner, I, well, for all the same reasons in the cluster ordinance and the fact that it's only seven out of 21, back up to meaningful proportions of open space, and I know everybody loves that, I just, I, I still don't think you've done quite enough. 10, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. 11, 12, 5. Meaningful proportions, a kid's going to go play back there on the road.
You can get access to the open area.
Let's not go down this road again.
No, no, we, we've gone down this road on meaningful space, and, and you're, you're saying that 1/3 of these lots have, have meaningful access.
Meaningful, they are adjacent to open space with meaningful proportions.
And, and the meaningful proportions, again, is your subjective opinion of a meaningful proportion.
Absolutely.
Meaning that you, in the past, you said those are soccer fields, football fields, baseball diamonds. You can have, you can have pickleball courts on 20 feet, you can have horseshoe courts on 10 feet, you can have cornhole courts on 10 feet. You can have a lot of things that aren't soccer-size access. To say there's seven lots here that have access is not being fair.
Commissioners, any other questions, motions?
I have a question for staff.
Sure, Mr. Farm.
Being fairly new to this, but kind of make me smarter on, excuse me, on how the 50% or whatever the requirement is for the developable space is buildable. How is that aggregated? In other words, if you have a fifth over here, and a fifth over there, and a fifth here, and a fifth there, is it just you add them all up? Because meaningful and logical, it seems like there ought to be a little more definition around what that intent is. So, I'm just struggling to see where there's an acre or more that's buildable, so. Okay, thank you.
I got one quick. One, your legend here says number of lots, 41, at the top of your drawing.
That's units allowed.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Question of staff. The fact that there are two different zoning designations, and I realize the number of lots per acre satisfies each of them, and, and I understand that, is that something that needs to be addressed in the longer term? Because I mean, you're going to have properties that are sliced if this plan were to go through. You'd have properties that are literally sliced through by the, the different zonings.
In an ideal world, it would be addressed. In this case, with it being R12 and RM20, as long as the density is met, there's not really any other issues that come up. And I'll give you an example of, of where it can cause issues. Say you have an RS property and like an R6 split zone subdivision, then you've got a portion of the subdivision that can have things like agricultural uses while half of the subdivision cannot. But in a situation like this, where you have RM20 and R12, the use that's permitted is residential. So, as long as they meet their density when they're developed, there's no additional problems that come up. But in theory, yes, you'd want your entire subdivision to be one zoning district. But there's nothing in the ordinance that would require that. May I also respond to the open space?
Sure.
So, I believe your question is just whether wetlands can be accounted as open space. Is that a good summarization of that question?
Sure. That's one question.
So, there's nothing, we just searched through both, searched, you know, keyword search for wetlands, just to be sure, but I've looked through this several times before as well. There's nothing saying that wetlands can't be counted as open space, and the purpose of the open space section is to preserve the natural feature. So, the wetlands falls within natural features, so it can be counted as open space, per my understanding. And as undevelopable land, that definition includes wetlands as part of it as well in the zoning ordinance definitions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I do have one question for staff. If, at, at final approval of this plat, if there were less than .855 acres of developable, developable area in the open area, would it be approved?
No, it would come back to Planning Commission if they drop below anything. Like, say you, you go to, if you go to get a grading permit, and for some reason, one of the ponds is sized bigger than, than it shows on this preliminary plan, and the open space no longer meets, the developable amount is not meeting, they would either need to provide a preliminary plan showing how the change-out met, so where they, you know, size some lots smaller or something like that, to come up with that open space, in which case, that could be approved by staff, because it would show the equaling out of open space. Or if they drop below, they would need to come back to Planning Commission, but, I mean, the ordinance requires that amount, so they would be looking at a variance in that case.
Okay. So, for those of us who aren't civil engineers on the Planning Commission, if there's .855 of developable area in open space, the plat would be approved?
That's, yeah, as long as it stays at that number. But it gets checked multiple times. It gets checked at the grading permit phase, and then gets checked again at the final plat phase.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, just to verify what Megan said.
Ms. Phillips?
Based on what you just said, however, they provided 1.673 acres, so they could drop down to that minimum requirement, and it won't come back to the Planning Commission. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Unless it's considered a meaningful amount, which is dropping below the required.
That's a substantial. That's a substantial amount.
Or if they move it in a way that the subdivision administrator, myself, considers to be something that would be against the intent of what you approved.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Madam Seif, yes.
The, one of the things that we tend to consider is how a development blends in with its surroundings. Personally, I don't think a comparison to Oak Ridge is very good because the topography is completely different. They're up on the crest of a hill, they don't have any wetlands, or at least not, you know, right adjacent to the houses. I looked at this, my first impression when I looked at this map that's on the screen was, how many homes are they trying to cram in there? I mean, I appreciate your creativity, I understand, you know, from a business perspective, you want to maximize that, but how would you, if somebody asked you, how would you argue that this fits in with the surrounding neighborhoods? How would you answer that?
I would actually say we put less houses in there than any of the surrounding neighborhoods. Yes, it's more cluster. I like to leave the more green space or open space per se, and this site really, you know, the site determined it needed that, you know, space in the middle left alone.
I mean, of the nine of us, I think I probably live the closest to this neighborhood, and I've been up and down Stallings Road thousands of times, I think. You know, and I know if I lived on Monarch, I would be perpetually concerned about runoff, especially where that bowl kind of empties out there.
Right.
And to disturb that even, I mean, I'm not saying it needs to be left unbuilt upon in perpetuity, but it seems like when you put 21 houses on there that that's going to have an effect, and I understand that we go through the engineering processes and y'all are gonna work with that. And it just strikes me as we're trying to squeeze a whole lot in here that, and I realize, you know, it's all gonna contribute to the traffic and some of the other things that those who spoke in opposition were mentioning, but this does seem like it's a pretty tight squeeze with a big spot of wetlands and trees and stuff, and then, of course, the perimeter buffer. So I'm just not, I'm not really comfortable with this one.
My thought was we aren't gonna be disturbing that bowl area. We're gonna, you know, we put the road up to the top to go around it. All the runoff is gonna go into those two pods. There should be no, you know, additional runoff going downstream at all. I mean, that's the whole purpose of those retention ponds, is it catches them. And if you've seen how the retention ponds work, I know in my other neighborhood, you know, it's never over, you know, like a quarter to a half full as much as it rains, and they're built for those, you know, the 100-year floods, whatever, like that. All the rain is gonna go to those detention ponds and slowly be released, which is, you know, how they're designed. So there's not gonna be more, there's probably gonna be less runoff down there, if anything.
Do you realize that's not in our purview? I know you can ask a question just for information, but we can't base our decision on that.
Understood.
Okay, just wanna make that point.
I'd like to just make one point to that candidate. I respect and hear what you're saying. I think, you know, the one, the only point that I would like to make is, as, you know, at the end of the day, these lot sizes could get smaller. We could cheat what we are providing as open space to provide more lot area. And like I said up here earlier, you know, right now, there's not a builder for this project. So we're, you know, we're kind of taking a shot here. You know, he's coming up here where he could potentially find himself in a situation where he could get more density. That could also work the opposite way. But I think, I think there, as tight as it looks, there is more meat on the bone, and I'm not saying you're gonna get 10 more lots, but, you know, what happens if I go from 62-wide to 53, which is a lot product I do all the time? So just wanted to make that point, but hear and respect what you're saying. Thank you.
I feel like we could've gotten more lots, but we chose to go with the wider lots. Just, I mean, I wasn't trying to, you know, shoehorn them all in, as you, you know, we were trying to build the best product we can. And they should be a more high-end house, it should be a, you know, a help or a, it won't be a detriment to the surrounding community, it should be an improvement, not improvement, but, you know.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, can I get a motion or any other question, or we'll be here till midnight?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Phillips.
We know our cluster ordinance is in need of upgrade. Unfortunately, we have what we have here. We could question the access to open space, and I have a lot of concerns here. However, I would like to make a motion that we approve with the following condition. I'm sorry, were there any prior conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Add, add the following. If there is any reduction in open space designation, it comes back to the Planning Commission.
Even I think that's a bit far. I mean, it could be .01 acre and then now they gotta bring it and...
We don't have to entertain my recommendation, but that's mine.
I just understand that could be problematic in the future.
Yes. In addition to the staff's condition.
Staff's recommendations or conditions. Anybody for a second on that one?
I'll second.
Ms. Franklin has a second. All right, the motion is by Ms. Phillips to approve with staff's conditions, along with the condition that if any open space is reduced, that it comes back to the Planning Commission. Ms. Franklin has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All those against, raise your hand. That fails. Can I get a motion in the reverse, please? Yeah, you need a motion to deny.
Make a motion to deny.
Based on?
Wolf's been said, the green space, the non-conformity to what we...
The 11.1.
11.1, yeah, 11.1.
11.32 and 11.4.
Yes.
I'll second.
All righty, Mr. Wood has a motion to...
Would Mr. Wood please voice his objections instead of the chairman giving him the sections?
Mr. Wood, you make a motion to deny what, based on bad cluster design or what?
Yes, bad cluster design.
You want to feed him some more answers? Would you let Mr. Wood speak, please?
That's enough before we have a, not falling out here. I'm just, where I'm at, I'm fixing to walk out, y'all can have it, which is what we need to do.
No, you can't do that.
Well, yes, I can too. Most definitely can.
Well, Mr. Wood made a motion with some specifics to deny.
No, Mr. Woods didn't make the specifics, the chairman made the specifics.
Mr. Wood, would you like another shot or would Mr. Holland like it?
No.
Or somebody?
I don't see how we have the lots that the developer claims we have that have access to open space that is usable open space. Mr. Bickle, you say seven lots?
I said seven, everybody has their own opinion.
You know, seven, maybe eight. You know, as the developer said, yes. I used to play in these woods, not this specific property. I played in people's backyards too, in the creeks, but no access, non-wetland waters, preserved wetland waters. I just don't see how there's enough access for the majority of the lots in this neighborhood.
Are you making a new motion or the other one?
No, sir.
Has been appealed, so...
I still second Mr. Wood's motion.
Call a question.
All right, all those who agree with Mr. Wood, raise your hand. All those who don't, raise your hand.
Are you voting on calling a question?
Just calling a question, not the motion, just to make sure we agree with him. All righty, Mr. Wood has made a motion to deny. Mr. Holland has the second. All those in favor to deny, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. It's denied six to three. Next application, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is PP 2025 77, Rosemont Gardens. Rosemont Gardens is a proposed single-family detached rural conservation subdivision located north of the intersection of Woodmont School Road Extension, which is a state road, and Bessie Road, which is also a state road. The applicant is requesting 122 lots on 41 acres for a density of 2.98 units per acre. Access is provided off of Bessie Road. Here is the site outlined in red, and here is Bessie Road looking east and looking west. Here is the site plan that was submitted in your packets. The project includes two full ingress egress points, four internal roads, a stubout for interconnectivity, one cluster mailbox unit within a parking area that includes three parking spaces, as well as additional CBUs in the cul-de-sac areas, 50-foot screening buffers around most of the perimeter of the site per Article 22, sidewalks per the ordinance, two detention ponds, 4,269 linear feet of new public road, and 15.8 acres of open space. There are 10.25 acres that are required. Here is the zoning of the site. The site is unzoned and is part of three relevant comprehensive or community plans. In the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, the site is designated as suburban mixed-use and mixed employment center. Suburban mixed-use place types include a variety of single-family and multifamily building types. The site is also a part of the Piedmont Area Plan, where the site is designated as both natural land conservation and suburban. Natural land conservation areas are habitat cores and patches that are critical for local ecosystems with a recommended density of zero to one dwelling unit per two acres. Suburban areas provide a transition between higher-density urban areas and rural landscapes. They largely consist of single-family residences on smaller lots or as part of a cluster development with a recommended density of one to four dwelling units per acre. Rosemont Gardens is proposing a density of 2.98 units per acre. Additionally, the site is a part of the South Greenville Area Plan, where it is designated as Business and Light Manufacturing Park. Here is the site and across the street from the site. And here is VAR 2025 107, which is a 50-foot buffer variance request, which was submitted to request a variance from the requirements of LDR Article 22, which requires a 50-foot perimeter buffer. The applicant is proposing to reduce the required buffer down to seven feet in width along the adjacent property ending in, tax map number ending in 300. The applicant states the reduction of the buffer in this area allows the entrance road to align with Woodmont School Road for secondary access into the proposed Rosemont Garden subdivision. According to the applicant, the adjacent property owner of the, of tax map number ending in 300 is dedicating a portion of their property to the Rosemont Garden subdivision for this access to align with Woodmont School Road. An internal access drive off this proposed entrance is being proposed, provided to the adjacent property owner as well. Roads and bridges noted their support of the variance at SAC, and there were no other comments. Additionally, we had a variance request, VAR 2025 109, which was submitted because the ordinance requires from LDR 5.2.4A, a minimum of 100-foot tangent prior to the start of any curve at subdivision entrances. The applicant states the purpose of the variance request is for the subdivision entrance road to align with Woodmont Middle School Road and addresses the site's constraints regarding that curve. At 122 lots, a traffic impact study was required for Rosemont Gardens. A traffic impact study was conducted for the proposed Rosemont Gardens residential community in accordance with SC DOT guidelines. The intersections that were studied are on the screen before you. Trip generation is 89 trips in the AM peak hour and 120 trips in the PM peak hour. The recommendations and key findings were as follows, as follows, from that traffic impact study. The signal at US 25 Augusta Road and SC 86, Bessie Road, should continue to function adequately after construction of the project. The North Flat Rock Road-Stokely Way approaches to SC 86 should continue to function with minor delays. No changes are recommended at any of the external intersections. Bessie Road currently provides a westbound left turn lane approaching Woodmont School Road. With construction of the site access opposite Woodmont School Road, the eastbound direction of Bessie Road should be widened to provide a standard left turn lane into access one. Site access two on SC 86 should function adequately. No auxiliary turn lanes are recommended. The site accesses should provide one ingress and one egress lane and be designated in accordance with SC DOT standards. SAC comments that were provided at the meeting from Land Development, the county's GIS shows a blue line stream on this property. If this proves to be an intermittent or perennial stream, a 50-foot riparian buffer will be required and lot reconfiguration needed. This is to be addressed at the grading permit phase. Staff recommends approval of the plan and variance requests with the standard and specific requirements. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Ms. Statean. Nobody signed up in opposition, and Mr. Harrison is the only one signed up in favor.
Good evening. My name is Paul Harrison. My address is 718 Lowndes Hill Road, Greenville, and just wanted to, kind of really wanted to touch on the variance aspect of this plan first. So the variance for the buffer, basically the lot that we're not buffering is part of the property owners who are selling us the property for the subdivision. So in eliminating their frontage on Bessie Road, we had to give them internal access off of our public road. So for all intents purposes, they almost become part of the subdivision, an internal access off of our internal roads. So that small section of property where we're decreasing that buffer, it's only in that one area where we're asking for that buffer decrease. We will bring their new driveway off of our internal road, and this was all in an attempt in coordination with the TIA, in coordination with Kurt, staff, and in coordination with DOT to get the driveway access lined up with the Woodmont Middle School Road. As you're well aware, this property is unzoned. It is, but it does have public sewer, and it falls up under a different category, although it may look like a cluster. It's totally different than a cluster. There's no specific parameters about open space, developable this, undevelopable that. It says you have to provide this much open space. The required open space in an unzoned project, major project, is 25%. Right now, we're proposing roughly 38% for the, for the project. I will kind of detail out, out of that open space, there's really only roughly three acres of that that we would consider passive open space, where we would go in and provide potential features on that, on that open space, fire pit, dog park, stuff or activities for the, for the community. The remaining, the 12.52 makes up the remainder of that open space. We had the TIA done, Megan went through those improvements, we had the concurrence letter from, from DOT, dealt early on in the process with Kurt Walters and, and traffic about the variance for the driveway alignment, about the tangent. He's in support of that. It makes all the sense in the world to have those driveways come out and align with each other along Bessie Road. We feel like this is a good project. I also want to say that REWA just recently completed the extension of this sewer trunk main that actually goes all the way up to the backside. If you guys are familiar with Woodmont Springs at the corner of 25 and Bessie Road, that If you guys are familiar with Woodmont Springs at the corner of 25 and Bessie Road, that main extension that this line was literally just put in, was put in for that, not only for that development, but for other parcels in this area, because they saw growth coming to this area. So, we feel like we have a good project. We were excited about this application and excited to move forward, and, you know, I would be glad to answer any questions that the planning commission has.
Let me summarize something for all the new folks. This is a conservation subdivision, and it's under Article 22 in the LDR, and most of you all might not even know that. So, there's a whole different section that applies to this, and that's where he's coming up with some of these numbers, all of these numbers. So, I mean, for future reference, just remember there's Article 22 when you see, and we don't see conservation subdivisions that often. Just wanted to let them know. I do have a question about the other variance, 109. What is that?
Which one was that?
The tangent.
Yeah, that's the one that I spoke about, about the typically, the ordinance reads, Mr. Chairman, that you're supposed to have 100 feet of straight road coming into the development before you curve the road.
Is Bessie state or county?
State.
It says 500 feet of site distance.
Well, we have the site distance. This is, I'm talking about the entrance road coming in. So, the ordinance requires 100-foot straight section of that road coming in before you curve the, before you have a horizontal curve in that road. And we're not able to meet that and be able to line up with Woodbridge.
What are you gonna have?
Roughly 50 to 60 feet. So, it would allow for, and keep in mind, too, that this is not our only, this is one of the full accesses. The other full access meets that. We're not asking a variance on that. But we roughly have 50 to 60 feet before they're start, before the horizontal curve in the road.
But there's still 500 feet of site distance?
The site distance on your plan is illustrated in red, that shaded area. We have the site, we have the required site distance at both full access points.
What if we didn't give you that variance? What would you do?
On the which one? The buffer or the tangent?
The tangent.
If you didn't give me that variance, I would have to go back in and I'd have to try to find another access point along Bessie Road.
No, I understand you aligning with that existing road, and that's a better way of doing it, but I just, I'm sorry, I'm still confused why a variance is required.
Well, my question is, you said Bessie Road is a state road?
Bessie Road is a state road.
We approve this variance.
It's not up to us.
What if DOT comes in and says, oh, heck no?
We've already coordinated, we've already coordinated everything with DOT.
You got a new writing?
I got a concurrence letter.
Okay, okay. I'm just wondering if it's really in our purview to even vote on a variance in this case?
Can I ask Mr. Engineer a question?
Sure.
Mr. Harrison, correct me if I'm wrong, the variance you're requesting on the 100 feet is interior to the subdivision.
That's correct.
It's got nothing to do with DOT.
No, sir.
Absolutely, positively, nothing to do with DOT.
It's the county, the interior roads would be county roads.
Interior roads would be a county road, got nothing to do with site distances.
Maybe I can help clarify a little bit. Probably a lot of you are looking at the title on there where it says secondary access variance. That's a typo. It should say like tangent curve variance, because they have two access points. This is speaking specifically about the curve as they're, on the county road as they come into the, into the subdivision.
That's what I thought, okay.
On the new county road to be built.
And it is, it's just the county road, and it's the requirement for that curve.
Gotcha. That's why I was trying to go before I had five helpers.
Well, you know, the heat.
I want to know where 108 is.
108, lot 108?
No, you go from 107 to 109.
In the lot numbers?
No, the variance numbers.
Oh, I'm not sure.
That's so, let me explain that for you. That's an internal thing.
Okay.
For this in particular, actually, the first variance was requested when this application was submitted. Those went to the May SAC meeting. The second variance came up as a result of discussion at SAC in May, and then was submitted, went to June SAC, and was included with the full application package.
All right.
Before you know.
Paul?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have your traffic study?
Uh, I got, we do. You mean, do I have it with me?
It's been completed.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, there's no traffic light needed on Bessie Road?
No, that's what. She went over all that right there on your screen. Okay.
I just want to be clear.
All right.
Let me make a, let me talk, speak to that, just so everyone's aware. In our conversations with DOT, and we understand that we may have to do this, at that intersection that I'm talking about with the school, they want us to look at a signal, signal study to see if it would warrant a signal there. Our traffic engineer has expressed that the counts on Bessie Road that were a part of this report, he doesn't feel like a signal would be warranted there, but they do want us to analyze that. So, I'm sure that during my encroachment permitting process, we're going to be conducting that study.
How are you sure that you're going to be putting a traffic signal there?
Maybe. If the study, I mean, look, if the TIS says that it's warranted or recommended, they're, the state's basically gonna go, eat by exactly what the study says.
If you're doing it during the week, during school?
Yeah, it'll have to be done during school hours.
Okay. Go ahead and prepare for it.
All right, Ms. Franklin. Variance 107, if we didn't give you that one, you would just lose a lot.
With the buffer?
Yeah.
No, I need the buffer to get the road in.
No, I'm back on 107.
Which, which one was 107? That's the buffer. So, I need the road, I need the road, the reason I can't provide the buffer is because the road parallels that property line. But what I'm, my original statement was, to me, it's a logical request, a request of variance there to allow me to get the road in, to align with Woodbridge.
I swear on 107, if you put that 50-foot buffer in, the cluster mailbox would move over a little bit.
No, 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 no. You cannot get, you can't get that, you can't get that buff, you can't get the road in and the buffer too.
All right, thank you. I'm having trouble seeing it, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Sure, thank you for asking.
You're welcome. The, Staff, could you put the lot lines back up, the current lot lines, their zoning that shows? Thank you. So, the parcel down at the lower right, that, the smallest of the three that are inside that shaded area, you're, are you purchasing a portion of that from the current owner?
It's a portion of that property.
A portion?
It's a portion of, yes, sir.
Has that sale taken place yet?
It's under, all of this is under contract. The closing has not happened, but it's under contract.
Okay. So, if he pulled out, that would be very problematic for this discussion, if. I just want to make sure I understand the scenario fully here.
You tell me if we pulled out of that one specific contract?
Or if he did? Well, I mean, to purchase the, the portion.
I don't know if this is our purview, Mr. Chairman.
No, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't, what was your question?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that the developer has the property, or will have, in this case, will have the property, but I think he's answered my question.
Well, yeah, if they don't, then it comes back to us in a different design, so.
They're, they're one of the sellers of the overall two larger parcels, too.
Okay. All right, any other questions for the engineer, staff, a motion? Bourbon?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application as presented.
With all staff's conditions?
Well, there's only one, there are no conditions.
Oh, I thought all that traffic stuff would be.
It's just a variance request, the application and the two variance requests.
Okay. All right, can I get a second? Mr. Matasevic has a second. Any further discussion? The motion?
Can I make a comment? Real quick.
Sure.
I, this is, this is quite distressing in this area, but considering the LDR allows 6,000 minimum square feet lots, and it meets the requirements, we have.
We don't have much choice, thank you.
Right.
All right.
I just wanted to make that note.
Well, I sort of knew that.
And we're still unzoned?
And it's still unzoned, yes, I know. It's conservation subdivision. Read Article 22 in your spare time. Mr. Hammond has a motion to approve with all, with staff's recommendations, along with the two variances. And Mr. Mat, it's been so long. Matasevic, I gotta focus, has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right. It is approved, wherever he is.
All right, this is PP 2025-78, St. Albans Grove. St. Albans Grove is a proposed subdivision located south of St. Albans School Road, which is a county road. The applicant is requesting 25 lots on 20.26 acres for a density of 1.23 units per acre. Access is provided off of St. Albans School Road. Here is the site outlined in red. And here is St. Albans School Road looking east and looking west. Here is the site plan that was submitted in your packets. The project includes one egress egress point, let's see, one internal road, one cluster mailbox unit in a cul-de-sac area, 20-foot screening buffers around the perimeter of the site, additional 24-foot landscape buffer along the road frontage of the site, one detention pond, 1,184 linear feet of new public road, and 6.188 acres of open space. 6.078 acres are required. Here is the zoning of the site. The site is designated rural living in the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan. Rural living place types are transitional areas that offer opportunities for low-intensity development that is well-integrated with the natural landscape and agricultural uses. The rural living character area type recommends a density of one dwelling per two-plus acres. St. Albans Grove is proposing a density of 1.23 units per acre. The site is also within the South Greenville Area Plan where it is designated as suburban residential. The suburban residential future land use type recommends a density of three to four dwelling units per acre. Here is the site and across the street from the site. SAC comments were, as provided, were from REWAT. Sewer is not accessible. Metro concurred with this SAC comment. As a note, the application is for a septic subdivision. All other SAC comments were addressed at the resubmital. Staff recommends approval of the plan with the standard and specific requirements. Mr. Chairman?
Can you go back one real quick?
Yep.
All right. Oh, one other, real quick one before we get to our speakers. What did the comprehensive plan say? Because that's not what my notes say.
Sorry. It's rural living, wasn't it?
Yeah, I have rural living listed here.
One dwelling per two-plus acres.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's what it said.
All right, thank you. All right, our speakers in opposition, John James. 10 minutes, name and address, please, sir.
Try to give my other neighbors some time here. John James, 100 St. Albans School Road. First of all, thank y'all for being willing to serve in this capacity for our community. I am obviously in opposition of this subdivision plan. First of all, if you look at the plot data, the, and they mentioned it's 25 lots, but the density table shows it as being 21 lots, but the density table says 21 lots, but the actual plan shows 25. So, that's the first, that's a small problem, I understand that. A larger problem that I noted in my letter to each of y'all, which I'm sure you've read, is the traffic issue that it's going to create on St. Albans School Road. It's a very small county on road, narrow signs, to the point when you meet somebody, like you have to drop one tire kind of off the asphalt. That's what I'm talking about here. So, 20, if it is 25 lots like this plan says, you're probably realistically talking about adding 50 to 60 more vehicles to that. In addition to that, the landscape buffer that the engineers have here is natural vegetation, all right? And that also goes with the open space in there. The landscape buffer is, says it's owned by the homeowners association, but there's no mention of the open space in here that's going to be, who it's owned by. There's no sort of ownership outlined there. The, I'm assuming from the plan, the NOS means natural open space, so the desire of the developer is to leave everything as it is. They showed a picture of the field, those trees are just on the road, but outside of that, the current landowner hasn't taken, really done any upkeep of that property at all, and it's just kind of overgrown fescue, and there's small saplings and things like that. So, where I'm going with that is, this cluster-type neighborhood, we say open space, and we think a nice place for the kids to play and things like that. That is not the plan for this subdivision. The plan for this subdivision is leave everything as is in your open space, and it's not a safe place for your kids to play or anything like that. The border, I'll end with that, be in natural vegetation. If we proceed with this, I would like to see something that's consistent with some of the other neighborhoods down in the South Greenville area with heightened berms and fences on there. That's all.
All right, thanks, sir. Marcus and Teresa Huffman?
Yeah, basically, we wanted to get up here, oh, I'm sorry, Marcus Huffman, Marcus and Teresa, 135 St. Albans School Road. It's directly across from this proposal. And we basically wanted to put a face to the letter that we sent to the SAC members and was included in the public comment back in May. And we're concerned with the number of homes that are being built, or as a term used earlier, being crammed, crammed in. And so, some, just wanted to highlight, didn't want to read everything in the letter, I'm sure you've seen the letter, but basically wanted to highlight a few concerns. The road condition, the poor condition of the road cannot support such an increase in traffic. And like was said earlier, the roads, the road is narrow. In fact, when you pull onto St. Albans School Road, there's a sign on each end that says narrow road. And like was said before, basically, when two cars are coming, you have to pull off, basically pull off the road or stop already. And then egress, limited egress of so many residents right across from our home on a narrow roadway will create an overcrowded traffic situation. And then also, along with the egress, is just the safety services, is the access and turnaround feasible for fire and emergency vehicles? So, like we said, we do live right, directly across from this property, and a couple of concerns with that, personal concerns we have with that is the construct, construction traffic on our property while it's being constructed, and then after it's built, just the concern with all the headlights coming out, coming out of the subdivision pointing right directly into our house. And so, we're not, we're not opponents to growth and smart development, but we want to be in keeping with the development of Holcomb Road and Ferguson Road, basically similar type of residences, you know, homes with acreages. And how does this blend in to the local community of these similar roads? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. How much time we got?
Five minutes, 33 seconds.
Bonnie Orr, you got five minutes. 33 seconds.
Thank you very much for letting us come in and give our opinions. Most of us are opposed to this cluster development. As I understand it, there was a meeting on June 17th with the county council that was wanting to delete the cluster developments. There was no, I also looked up Article 11, as it was explaining the cluster developments, there was no mention of individual septic tanks being put on the lots. So, I assume that in the past, they had public sewer, and there's no. So I assume that in the past, they had public sewer, and there's no mention here. According to the RS zoning, it said that all lots should have 25,000 square feet required for septic tanks and have public water as mandated by South Carolina DHEC. None of these lots are equal to 25,000 square feet. So we would like for you to reduce the number of homes that are going to be put on this property and have more open space, more common space. Also, I have checked with the Fire Marshal, and according to their fact sheet, they need the roadway to be 26-foot wide, excluding the shoulders, and the turnaround to be 150-foot. So we have the long ladder trucks, the homes will be two stories, so the ladder trucks will be necessary in case we do have an emergency. Also, the 20-foot proposed natural landscape buffer is not a good idea for the rural area that we are in. We're still a farming community, we have many types of machinery, and they're working and parked on adjoining properties. So it surrounds on three sides that it's, we have farm equipment. So we would like for you to require the developers to go back and put fewer homes, more open space, and to have a six-to-eight-foot privacy fence around St. Albans Grove to ensure the safety and security for all of the parties. I was a child at one time, and I know what children do to get into the woods and the creeks and the streams and climb on other people's fences. I was one of them. So I know what to look out for. The owners that are going to be coming in, they do need to know where their boundaries are, especially in rural areas like ours. I hope the current plan will be denied, and a new one have to be submitted addressing these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That's everybody who signed up in opposition, and we're back to Austin Allen.
Austin Allen, Arborland Design, 49 Greenland Drive, Greenville, 29615. Back in front of you tonight to request your consideration of 25 lots on St. Albans School Road. We are going septic. This is a cluster, as stated before. Our average lot size is 19,631 square feet, which is roughly 78%, 79% of what is minimally required within the zoning ordinance. Starting with, with the open space, when we started looking at this, you know, typically, you know, we would try to split the property, provide as much area on the backs of each lots for grading, space, you name it, long list of reasons. In this case, we are, we are hugging the western boundary line of this property to provide as much contiguous open space as we can on the east side of the property as well as the south side of the property. We tried to work with the road and play with the design so we could provide more area. We're counting it as open space. It may not be perceived as open space, but our goal with that was to try to provide additional room for buffering from other neighbors and properties. Kind of to that same point, what we have listed is a 20-foot undisturbed landscape buffer. Right now, as stated before, all that property except for the hedgerow along the road is grown-up pasture land with a lot of pond saplings growing up in it. As far as I understand the code, we are allowed to go in and plant that buffer because there are no trees currently in that buffer, correct?
That's true.
That's true. So we could, so, and I certainly think that is the intent, but that is absolutely a possibility and available to us. One thing that I would like to note on this property is, and the way we designed it and the reason we went cluster, so if you take away the common area for the pond, all of the 20-foot undisturbed buffer, the road area, at the end of the day, this could be done as a conventional subdivision, meaning we could get the same amount of density with 25,000 square foot lots. We did not for two reasons, one of which is less infrastructure, and as we understand the intention of the cluster ordinance is to provide that density while allowing for less infrastructure to be required, which in turn, it ultimately goes back to the homeowner or the buyer of the product. I think too, you know, it's, although it is overgrown, I think it is a pretty pasture land, and I think if you, you put a bush hog on it one or two times out the summer, it would, it would look very good and it would be very functional. And Megan, just to, just to confirm, within that open space, we are able to maintain it as what it currently is, meaning mowing, so on and so forth. So, so that is the intention. Like I said, it's a, it's a pretty, pretty piece of pasture land. Try to save as much as possible. That being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for the engineer?
Is there not a minimum lot size for septic?
So, and there's, there are a few codes that set a minimum lot size.
Does the county not have a minimum lot size?
The county, the county refers to DHEC's requirements. Meaning if you can meet what DHEC needs on a lot basis, you can do whatever lot size that you can, you can do.
He's right.
So in the, a perk test was not required at this point? It will have to be, and if not, then you'll have to go from there, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am. Assuming we move forward to tonight, we will get a soils engineer out there who will look at each individual lot to confirm, so we know on the front end that all the dirt works, we don't have to account for engineered systems or anything like that throughout construction.
Are there internal sidewalks?
No, ma'am.
How are the homes on the one side going to access the largest portion of the open space?
Well, we, we've got two, two access points, one of which is shared with the pond. I mean, that is, that is going to be your access. I mean, typically, in subdivisions like this, where they're smaller, there's less traffic, it is not abnormal for folks to get out and walk up and down the road, whether it be exercise or go to the, go to the open space, but...
The landscape buffer, I, that, Mrs. Orr, I... Thank you. No, I mean, they will, if there's not plantings, they will plant it. Can you put a fence in it? I didn't think you could.
You can.
Okay. I was sitting here reading it. So I mean, they will block as much as they can. I just, I felt for her and her understanding of the 20-foot undisturbed buffer. Any other questions for the engineer? Does the developer want to speak?
He's good.
Well, he signed up.
Just in case.
I know. Any other questions, concerns? I think my biggest concern is rural living is one dwelling per two-plus acres, which is 1.23. I just think it's a little dense. And that land on the backside of 19, can you build a building on that land?
I could extend a lot and make a house go back there to that undisturbed.
Well, I know, but you've called it developable, and we're back into that same subject again. The definition that's in the ordinance.
At the end of the day, we could have made that lot, but we chose not to.
Oh, I know. I know. I just happened to see it and trying to make a point. Any other questions, motions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Phillips.
What are the current requirements for buffers on the outside of the subdivision? I'm sorry, on the buffers? Fencing height, things like that?
You mean for just the perimeter?
The undisturbed buffer perimeter.
For like the screening type of?
Yes.
It can be a wall fence, it can be a berm.
Nothing specific.
It needs to be at least six feet in height.
Six feet.
And provide some kind of screening that's, you know...
All the way around?
Well, I mean, I don't think it has to be on the, it's just to adjacent properties, not to the road.
Okay.
There is a buffer along the road for the subdivision, but it's not a requirement, it was just additional.
All right, thank you.
I can read it to you if you'd like. Okay. Like I said, I'm still concerned about the comp plan.
Well, let me address the comp plan.
All right.
The comp plan is an aspirational document. It carries no enforcement. It is aspirational, it is advisory.
Oh, boy.
And if the chairman will let me speak without making deriding remarks, I would appreciate it. The, we refer back to zoning, which is not aspirational. Zoning is an ordinance. If I'm not mistaken, in residential suburban, it's 1.7 units per acre. Is that correct?
It is if you have public sewer. I believe it is less if you don't. Or maybe it's water. It's water.
It's water.
I confuse those, because to me, I would think sewer, but the ordinance says water.
Okay, so it's 1.7 units per acre. The applicant is proposing 1.23 units per acre. Also, and typically, when we consider plans with this commission, the area plans tend to take more priority. The South Greenville Area Plan calls for three to four units per acre. The zoning calls for 1.7 units per acre. The applicant's proposing 1.23 units per acre. If you choose to deny it on density, be a great appeal basis, I would think.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do I get a hug later? No hug.
Mr. Chairman, did you say this is one and a quarter acres? Your lots, your lot size?
No, lot size averages, I thought it was 18,000, they said 19,000.
Which is?
Which is...
About one and a quarter?
About, no, it's about 1,500 square feet less than half.
So doesn't Greenville County require an acre and a half or septic tank?
No, that's unzoned.
Or unzoned.
Shoot, I can't find the state law that says that we're supposed to follow the comp plan. There is one. All right, who wants to make a motion? Well, I guess we'll be here all night. Any other questions for the engineer?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, the application be approved. There are no special conditions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Ms. Franklin has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor to approve, raise your hand. Oh, goodness. All, all those against, raise your hand. It passes 6-3, if I counted right. Harbor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is PP 2025-81, Harbor Chase. Harbor Chase is a proposed Cluster Option 1 subdivision located southwest of the intersection of Fairview Road and SC 418, both of which are state roads. The applicant is requesting 85 lots on 112.03 acres for a density of .76 units per acre. Access is provided off of SC 418, which is a state road. Here is the site outlined in red, and here is Highway 418 looking east and looking west. Here is the site plan that was submitted in your packets. The project includes one ingress/egress point, one hidden emergency entrance, four internal roads, one cluster mailbox area with eight parking spaces, 20-foot screening buffers around the perimeter of the site, additional creek buffers along creeks on site, four detention ponds, 1.22 linear miles of new public road, and 44.81 acres of open space. 44.81 acres are required. Here is the zoning of the site. The subject site is part of the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan, where it is designated as rural. Rural place types are characterized by natural or cultivated landscapes with minimal development. The rural character area type recommends a density of one dwelling per two acres. Harbor Chase is proposing a density of less than one dwelling per acre. Here is the site and across the street from the site. At 85 proposed lots, a traffic impact study was not required for Harbor Chase per the ordinance. Per LDR Table 9.1, a traffic impact study is only required for single-family homes where there are 90 or more units proposed. However, a traffic impact study was completed for the site under a previous application, which was Savannah Oaks Estates, and included in the submittal. Here are the recommendations from the previous study. Construct a westbound left-turn lane on SC 418 with the site access with at least 150 feet of storage and appropriate taper. SAC comments that were provided at the meeting. From Land Development, USGS-defined blue line streams require either a 50-foot or 100-foot buffer depending on the drainage area. Based on the county's GIS, lots 63 and 64 appear to be within the 100 feet of the stream. Additionally, Corps of Engineer permit will be required for this, if, for this culvert if USGS blue line. Corps of Engineer permit to be addressed at engineering stage. Also, from floodplain, add the following comment to the preliminary plan and final plans. No encroachment included, including fill, are permitted within the floodplain unless certification with supporting technical data by an SC-registered engineer is provided to demonstrate that the encroachment will not result in an adverse impact to the floodplain. Staff recommends approval with conditions of the plan with the standard and specific requirements. The conditions are as follows. Per the traffic impact study, construct a westbound left-turn lane on SC 418 at the site access with at least 150 feet of storage and taper. Submit a revised preliminary plan by July 1st, 2025, showing lots 63 and 64 are not within 100 feet of the stream, and all listed floodplain notes are on the plan. Mr. Chairman?
All righty. Speaking in opposition, Will Bannister? Did I get that right?
Chairman, my name's William Bannister, 315 Shag Bark Circle, Simpsonville, 29680. Back of my property backs up to this, this subdivision. And as last time, my objection is the fact this is zoned RR1, which means it's supposed to be an acre, acre and a half per property for a septic tank. So that's my main opposition to it. And the fact that there's only one entrance in and out of that subdivision. And going on 418 with the traffic, people are gonna have a hard time getting in and out of that subdivision period, because I know I have a hard time at the top of the street where my road comes in at, which is not too far from Fairview Road, and it still kicks me sometimes to get out of, get out of the subdivision just to get on to 418 to go where I need to go. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Nancy Reynolds.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Reynolds. I live 12 Buckfield Court, Simpsonville, 29680. My property also adjoins this, and my biggest concern is that the proposed development does not fit the rural character of neighboring properties. The eastern border of this development adjoins 11 existing properties on Shag Bark Circle and Buckfield Court. These 11 home sites average 5.1 acres per home. The Harbor Chase development is about 10 times greater density with half-acre lot sizes, adjoining all of those of us with five-acre lots, and we don't believe that that's within the rural character that we feel exists in that part of the county. As was mentioned, this property has been before the commission twice before and denied both times as a different development, different developer and different name. It was previously Savannah Oaks, and the last time that it was rejected by this group was the same discussion again about density, lot sizes, is, is RR1 really supposed to have half-acre lots? Are we supposed to have that many half-acre lots with septic tanks in that small an area? I would also like to bring up again that... at last week's county council meeting, there was quite a discussion about cluster developments as a whole and the possibility that that whole section be struck out of the LDR. Some of that discussion sounded as if the council could not agree on what to do, so they were gonna table that, and there was discussion about a moratorium on approving additional cluster development subdivisions until that issue was taken up and either fixed or answered by county council. So I'm asking, I know a couple of you, at least a couple of you, were at that meeting, and so I'm asking, what actually was decided? Is there a moratorium? And does, do existing applications fall under that? No. Okay. The septic tank issue again? That is in process, not in process? The one and a half acre requirement for septic tanks?
That's only unzoned, and this says sewer is available.
No, sewer is not available. This is all septic tanks. 85 lots with septic tanks. I don't know what you're looking at.
Says Metro connects.
But, no.
On my data sheet, it says Metro connects. Harbor Chase. I'm sorry, hold on.
There must be a typo on the data sheet.
It says sewer district Metro connects, but it is, if you look at the actual plan...
The plan says septic.
It's septic tanks.
Okay, I just was gonna buy this, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, those of us who live out there on five-acre lots, we have septic tanks to deal with as our own. And about the traffic impact study, this is a question, I guess. Do, when those studies are commissioned, do they consider all of the surrounding areas that already have approved subdivisions that may or may not be under development yet? Or are they truly only looking at the impact of one given application? Because there are an awful lot of homes already approved within two miles of that major intersection at Fairview Road and 418. And this traffic study was done with, originally with Savannah Oaks, which is a year and a half ago. And, okay, this is 85 lots, and maybe it doesn't meet the 90-lot minimum requirement for a traffic study.
That's what I'm thinking.
But they went ahead and included, they went ahead and referred to the original one. And I would just have to ask if that should be, if the actual traffic that's there should be reevaluated given the growth, the exponential growth in this part of the county.
With it falling under 90 lots, I'm afraid I think the traffic study's not required per the ordinance.
So, the next subdivision down the street that may be another 85 lots, those don't combine. There's no, nobody looks at the overall of what's been approved.
Can I address?
Sure.
So, this, this site does access a state road. SCDOT can require a traffic impact study, and they can also require for their encroachment permits, which is what you have to get to access a state road. They can require them to look at a study area that is larger than just the one subdivision.
And how does that happen?
So, that process happens after a preliminary approval. SCDOT will require it as part of the permitting phase.
Okay. Okay. Do you have much time to others?
How much time do we have?
4:57.
4:57. I guess you're Harry Rogers. No, I'm sorry, wrong number. Josh Hayes. Sorry.
How are y'all doing? Josh Hayes, 16 Buckfield Court, Simpsonville, South Carolina, 29680. I'm definitely in oppose to the new neighborhood going in. A lot of what everybody has already said, of course. It's pretty much bothering everybody in the neighborhood. I think the biggest thing for me is the fact that this neighborhood is so different from everything else in the area. A lot of the people that moved out to this area moved out there in the 80s and 90s, and they moved out there for a reason. It was because they wanted land. I know that because of growth and everything like that, that these kind of things are expected. But I hope the council just really takes into effect that this neighborhood does not fit with our neighborhood that backs up to it or any of the lands that surrounds it. I know that last year, on my property, I have almost six acres, five and a half acres that butt up to this. Last year, my son shot an eight-point buck, and according to your chart, he probably would've ended up in about your retaining pond. And, you know, I've lived there since I was in third grade, and I fully intend on living there my whole life. I bought the property from my parents, and I never planned on going anywhere. It wasn't until recently, until me and my wife actually looked at selling our property, which I think is very unfair to be run off your property from something like this. I will say, if the developer's here, he's gonna have a lot of trouble selling the lots that back up to my property because I fully intend on living the same way I've always lived. I have signs on my property that are about nine feet tall that say, "Be careful, we hunt shooter." They point to the woods, and they don't bother anybody. But I imagine they'd probably bother somebody when they're trying to buy that lot. But please take into consideration the neighborhood and what's around it. Thank you.
All righty, our final speaker, final speaker in opposition is James Hendricks. How much time?
Three minutes.
You got three minutes.
All right. James Hendricks, 4 Buckfield Court, Simpsonville, 29680. The problems I have with the proposed plan is they have, they say they have an emergency entrance, but unfortunately, it's right by the main entrance. So, to me, that doesn't really have adequate, if there's emergency in the neighborhood, to get into the neighborhood. So, they do have a potentially proposed on the other side of the neighborhood to get out, but they don't own the land. I don't know if they have ambitions to buy the land or if they can get the land, but right now, that land isn't there, so they can't really put that in the plan for having an exit. So, to me, that's a safety issue for if you do have an emergency in the neighborhood, you need to have emergency vehicles to get in, to get out. And with that plan, I don't think it's quite adequate. Also, we haven't, we, they mentioned that there's a lot of new neighborhoods on 418 and Fairview within a close proximity. What people don't realize is this puts a lot of stress on the infrastructure for the immediate area. So Greenville has the cleanest water in the country. Having all this extra growth, it can jeopardize that. Also, we, I don't know if you saw that Duke has to build some more plants to produce some more energy because we have all these neighborhoods coming in. So, that's gonna raise rates for everyone because they have to pay for all this new infrastructure for, like Duke Electricity. So, having more of these cluster neighborhoods, I don't think is good. And like I said, there's a lot of neighborhoods coming in already. I don't, I think we need to slow down and see where we're at before we keep on adding. And I think the density is too compact and doesn't really fit the characteristic of our neighborhood or the immediate area around there. And that's about all I have to say.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Engineers, Paul or Madeline, who wants to speak?
I'd like, Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Rogers signed up?
Yeah. All righty.
For him to, if that's okay.
That's fine. Harry Rogers.
Don't call. We don't want to have a lost time accident at the council meeting. So, thank you guys for letting me speak. My name's Harry Rogers, 429 Nashville Road, Fountain Inn, 29644. This is my mother, Dorothy Rogers. She is the owner of the property. I know oftentimes, when people come up here and discuss about developments, you hear from the people in the neighborhood, but you don't hear from the people on the other side. And we thought it'd be a good idea if you heard a little bit about our story and about what goes on in Shag Bark Circle. So, this is my mother. She was born in 1946 in Princeton, South Carolina. If y'all know where Princeton is, it's in southern Greenville County. She was born in a barn. Her family were sharecroppers. My daddy's family were sharecroppers. They grew up poor. We inherited the property about 35 years ago. The Shag Bark development was already there. My father passed away about four years ago. My mother has had some health issues. We need to liquidate the property to generate some funds to help take care of her. If you guys have elderly family, you know how expensive that is. I want to talk about the guys at Trust Homes that we've been working with, the original developers that came and spoke to you a couple of years ago. We weren't really involved in them. She was kind of sick at the time, and we were trying to sell. And those guys, they had a lot of houses on that plan. And it didn't go through, they didn't have the entrances worked out. So, we hooked up with these guys at Trust, and they'll come up and speak in a minute. I think they have a good plan. They, it meets, as far as I can tell, all of the zoning requirements where it is. I'm not, I'm not a, I'm not a civil engineer, so I'm not sure on that. But I've looked at everything, and it looks like it meets everything that you guys are looking for as far as green spaces, as far as borders, as far as water runoff and retention ponds and all that stuff. We asked that y'all would approve that and let it move forward for our family. And I wasn't gonna say anything, but I feel like I need to address the guy that come up here and said he was trespassing on the property and hunting. I was not gonna talk about that, but if you're gonna give me another couple of minutes, I'll just go over the violations of the people that live in Shag Bark, how they treat the property. Because we don't live on the property. We are three miles away. So, so they, they treat that piece of property like it's their local playground. There is a lady that rides her horses regularly on the property. I have visited her house with a sheriff's officer before to say, "Please stop riding on the property. Please stop riding by my no trespassing signs." Because we also used to deer hunt over there, and you might get shot. That lasted about six months, then she started again. People ride their four-wheelers, they ride their golf carts. People deer hunt. We know they deer hunt because we've seen them on camera. And if you're hunting over there, like I used to with my kids when they were little, and you're hunting on one side of the property, because it's a big piece of property, it's 112 acres. If you're on one side of the property and you hear a shot, you don't know where that guy is. You don't know what direction he's shooting. You don't know if he even knows you're there. So we stopped hunting there. And now they have just kind of overrun the property. I wanted, I wasn't gonna say that, but I felt like I needed to. So, I hope you guys will, will approve the development. You probably didn't want to hear all that, sorry. And I'm gonna let the developers speak, unless y'all got some questions.
Any questions for the other?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
No, you go. Can't do that, sir, I'm sorry. You've had your time.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. How much time does Paul have now?
5:55.
5:55. Are we quick?
Thunder.
Oh, yeah. Okay, Paul, for the record, Paul Harrison, 718 Lounge Hill Road, Greenville, South Carolina. I just want to quickly touch on some of the points that were made earlier. So, for the most part, all of the surrounding properties around this property are unzoned. This parcel kind of, I'm not sure when it was rezoned to RR1, but it's currently zoned RR1. And I know, I've heard this a time or two, that the greedy developer comes in and he uses cluster development as a way to get around and get the density that he wants. But I want to make something pretty clear, specifically on this development, that we're not trying to get the maximum number of lots on here. If I was trying to get the maximum number of lots, I would've put, I would've shown 112. We were not involved with the original application, with the original submittal, myself nor the developer that is my client right now. So we backed that down to a meaningful, what we thought was meaningful. We needed to make this financially equitable for the developer and the builder. So we're showing 85 lots. Out of those 85 lots, we're preserving 51% open space. So we're preserving over half of the property in open space. And I know some of that open space is creek and buffers and stuff like that, which is good. But look at the other open space that we're preserving that is very meaningful to the community. You know, I'm not a, I'm not a proponent of showing one-acre lots, maximizing it out, and cutting down every single tree on the property, which we could do. We could do. All you gotta do is pan right down the road about two or three parcels. Do me a favor. Look at that aerial and look at basically from property line to property line, east to west, north and south. There's not a tree standing anymore. I don't see that as a good thing. I see responsible developments with meaningful open space. And that open space is not only passive open space, preservation of trees, buffers, wetlands, floodplain, whatever you want to call it, but also having, incorporating active open space in there too, which does, in my opinion, it does have direct access to the majority of the lots within the community. I don't know everyone's address that spoke ahead of me, but most of their home sites are 1,000 feet away from our property line, specifically the lots that are closest to the perimeter of property along the eastern side. We have already coordinated with DOT. We're well aware that we have to put in a left-turn lane. Concerning the emergency access, we specifically had a conversation with the fire marshal. And rather than trying to submit a variance for a widened access, the fire marshal specifically wanted an emergency access. And, and he has reviewed this plan, and he has signed off on that. So, we're .76 lots per acre. Is it gonna look like a house that was built in a development 50 years ago? No, it's not. But if you look at the most recent development in this area, once again, two or three parcels to the left, look at that development and compare it to what we're proposing before you tonight. This is a better plan. This is a better approach. This is what cluster open space should look like, in my opinion. And when done correctly, it can be done correctly. It's not only meaningful to the county, it's very meaningful to the residents who buy within the subdivision. And it also buffers all the properties around you. Look at the ponds where they discharge. We discharge across our property, and in some cases, that water discharges across 100, 200 feet of property, our property, before it ever reaches a stream. That, in our opinion, little subtle things like that make a difference. And I think when you go to permitting and stuff like that, it's much, it's a much more manageable plan. We're not, we're not of the opinion of cutting down every single tree on the site just so we can maximize out the number of lots and provide one-acre lots. I think you can do cluster development in, in a manner that, that benefits everyone. And hopefully, we presented a plan that, that planning commission can support. And with that said, I'll, I'll be willing to answer any questions that anyone on the commission has. has.
I've got a question, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
On your emergency access, the property owner on the other side of that has agreed to let them have access?
That's on our property.
That's on their property.
But where it exits out is not on your property.
The emergency access is up on 418.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I didn't touch on that.
That's just connectivity.
That's just connectivity.
That's interconnectivity that, for all intents purposes, we're required to provide.
Any other questions? Mr. Mattissevich.
Similar to the last application, the septic questioner, are we all okay with the lot size, the septic? There's no issues with that?
We have no purview. They could come in here with 1,000 square foot lots, and it's up to them to get their perk test and DEHAC permits, DES, whatever it's called.
But nobody's aware of any issues? That was all I wanted to know.
I don't know. No, sir. I think the wetlands butted up some against those lots. They don't have a problem with that? And I know it's not our purview.
Well, what you're seeing is, what you're actually seeing, we keep referring to that as wetlands. That's a 50-foot buffer off of the wetlands. The core jurisdiction is the wetlands, and in some cases, that buffer's 100 feet. So that is not wetlands. That is a buffer from the wetlands. Totally different.
Yeah.
But you're...
Duty flows downhill.
Valid point. We will have to get all of our individual permits permitted through DES.
Oh, I know you do. I just was, I'm ribbing you about that one. Lot 17, I got to ask real quick, what's the slope off that pond on that cul-de-sac?
What's the slope off of the pond?
Yeah, I mean, is it 10%, 30%, 100%? I mean, you've got some pretty steep areas there. Lot 17.
If I had to guess, probably 10% currently, the existing green.
With that many lines, and I don't have a scale. What? Yeah, I just, I guess you all check, because 30, if it exceeds 30%, it can't be counted, right?
Yeah, slope greater than 30% can't be counted, is, yeah.
Oh, we did a, we did, we did a, we did an, I don't know if you guys see it in your packet, but we do a...
It should be in the packet. The full plan, so I don't have it on the PowerPoint, but there should be a plan within your packet that shows the slopes and the open space topography.
Yeah, it shows the contour lines, but I need to know the distance. All right, well, I know staff checks that stuff. Any other questions for the engineer?
I have a question for staff.
Sure, Mr. Park.
So at 85 lots, a traffic impact study is not required.
That's right.
But a previous developer on the same property was going to put in 90 units or more.
Yeah.
And so you guys have mentioned about a westbound turn lane on SC 418. Is that required now?
It's not required. The previous study recommended it. I've included it as a condition of approval if you should choose to adopt that.
Okay. And what is typical, and more so, what does the law say about when those have to be put in place? Are they done concurrently with the development?
So the way that we do it right now is no more than 40 lots can be permitted until those things are put in, so until any requirements from the TIS are put in place. So you can get a final plat for the first 40 lots, then get your building permits and be building those lots, but you can't do any more than that until you've done those improvements.
And we can add that as a requirement, is what you're telling me.
No, that's their rule.
That's how we handle it, when it is a requirement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Does Madeline want to speak, or you just? Boy, he needs it too, doesn't he?
My back up.
Mr. Chairman.
You need it sometime too. Yes, ma'am.
Paul, I wonder if you might be able to elaborate on how that emergency access is technically beneficial for the purpose and intent of a secondary access?
I mean, I can give you my professional opinion about that, that I've been doing this for 25 years, and I've been doing, I've probably designed over 200 emergency accesses. I've never seen one used before. So I'll start with that.
Because they're hidden.
I'll start with that statement.
Okay.
No, no, no. In an emergency situation, I personally have never seen one used to date. But in the event that that intersection was blocked at the main intersection, it would give the fire department the potential to get away from that access and be able to get into the subdivision. And the fire marshal felt like that was a better solution for him, as opposed to requesting a variance and trying to do a widened entrance up to the first intersection.
Okay. Right. Another question for subdivision administration.
The fire marshal.
What was this? What was this? No, I had a question for Ms. Staton. Is there a reason we're not receiving the fire department's input in with our packets on a regular basis?
You haven't seen them in the SEC comments. I'll make sure they get added in. We are hearing from the fire departments. For some reason, I think it's because we have to send to so many different fire departments, those comments don't stay digitally as much as the other ones do.
And I understand the background on that just a little, so that's kind of why I'm asking.
I'll make a note and make sure that you see those.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize for any confusion.
That would be helpful. He made comments on the PSM. Was his name Zach Terry?
Zach Terry, the fire chief, fire marshal.
I don't remember what his name was.
I can't remember what his name was.
Pretty certain that's who it is.
That's who I think it is for that area.
Mr. Hall?
No, I just, I wanted to say something about that, and Ms. Phillips beat me to it. And to your point, Paul, and, yeah, I've known you a long time, but just because the entrance has never been used doesn't mean it shouldn't be there, and it shouldn't be in a strategic location. Because when it is needed, it's needed. You know, I'm curious too as to why it's so close to the main entrance, because the main entrance is blocked, chances are that's going to be too.
If the fire marshal approves it, we can't say a thing.
You're right, you're right.
Which is rare.
But the fire marshal, the fire marshal in each department interprets the code, and they're giving a lot of, they're giving a lot of leeway. So, but if he's okay with it, then...
All right, any other questions or a motion? This rain's making me want to take a break. The break or the motion? No, no.
No, the break.
Yeah, really. Any other questions? I mean, this is better than it was the previous two times. Is it wonderful? I can't give my opinion, apparently. So...
I move that we accept the staff's recommendation.
Okay. Let's see, Ms. Franklin, I had a motion to approve along with all the staff's conditions. Can I get a second?
A second, unfortunately.
Really? Mr. Wood has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
All right, Ms. Manning says no. Pass is eight to one. We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Yeah, I've literally.
Yeah.
Running around in my backyard.
Around my pool. That's just now. That's in my backyard, and it's rained almost an inch and a half just at my house. My hair was flooded now.
It's pretty bad.
They do, they do have to come down.
Well, yeah, they do harden it once you're wired, and then you don't have to do it. They just do it.
He said, I got a river beside my house. It's raining. I was going to call Dodge today. He said, I'm going to call Reva. I said, you don't call Reva. He said, don't call Heathrow either, doesn't it? They don't even have his line. I said, I'm going to call Metro. That's a big question. Because when I called, they told me I was on the list.
On the list.
We got called right. Why did you take on more? Why did you take on more?
No, I did, you know, and I'm scared of your life.
I know how it is.
Nobody, nobody can just do that.
It's not.
You have to put in water.
Yeah, that's a good plan.
I think you did both, yes, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're on the west side, not so, but they won't be...
I think you did both, yes, of course.
Yeah.
I told you not to.
I told you not to.
I took my man's spot.
I was just asking you a question.
He said, that's a good thing. He said, that's a good thing. I was, oh, yeah.
I mean, you know, we look at it, we fix, you know, we write every thing into it, every scenario, but there must be somewhere.
Red line.
Yeah.
Sumerian.
Because, you know, cold.
Oh, shoot.
Ready to go, huh?
I always like...
All right, Stephen, five minutes left.
I need to cool something.
Yeah, but it does, I hope we're in.
I told you not to.
I took my man's spot.
I took my man's spot.
I took my man's spot.
I got to feed my dog.
You know, I was taken out of planning, like, a year and a half ago.
We didn't have some...
We didn't have this staff, you know? And now, and now, now we got to...
Says we have zero power, power outage in my house.
He's not usually like that. He's very...
I agree that he was right.
Well, that is...
You know, I live southern Greenville County, and ours is out right now.
Yeah, my wife just texted me. Our power's out, and I'm like, nothing to do.
Traveling, should we travel a little?
Right now, it's not, I'm not, it's not a good time for that.
Hey, Josh, we got a quorum, why don't we just go ahead and boogie?
Hey, I'm waiting on you.
I'm waiting on you.
Recording in progress.
Let's go the long way. All right, go ahead, Ms. Staton. Reedy Grove.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is PP 2025-82, Reedy Grove. Reedy Grove is a proposed rural conservation subdivision located south of Emily Lane, which is a state road. The applicant is requesting 95 lots on 44.58 acres for a density of 2.13 units per acre. Here is the site outlined in red, and here is Emily Lane looking east and looking west. Here is the site plan that was submitted in your packets. The project includes one ingress egress point, one hidden emergency entrance, five internal roads, one cluster mailbox area with eight parking spaces, 50-foot screening buffers around the perimeter of the site, additional creek buffers along creeks on site, two detention ponds, one stub out for future connectivity, 3,701 linear feet of new public road, and 20... 20.39 acres of open space. 11.15 acres are required. The subject property is part of the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan where it is designated, designated mixed employment center. These areas recommend a density of eight to 30 dwelling units per acre. The subject property is also part of the Piedmont Plan. And I don't have that designation. It's not on my list.
It says zero to one dwelling unit per two acres.
Okay. It's literally deleted off of my. My speech here.
Natural, it's natural land conservation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's suburban and natural. So, nat- natural would be zero to one per two acres, and then the suburban is one to four dwelling units per acre.
Right.
Apologies for that. Here is the site and across the street from the site. And at 95 lots, a traffic impact study was required for Reedy Grove. A traffic impact study was conducted for the proposed Reedy Grove residential development in accordance with SCDOT guidelines. The TIS findings included the following. Based on build-out volumes, no turn lanes are warranted at the site access. The capacity analysis indicates that all approaches at the study intersections are expected to operate at LOSC or better in all scenarios. All approaches are anticipated to maintain their levels of service from no build-to-build conditions. No mitigation is recommended at these intersections. Recommendations are none. Okay? The main SAC comment that I wanted to include was from land development. The site is located with, within an E. coli TMDL watershed and will disturb over 25 acres. Therefore, it will need to meet the SEDES anti-degradation regulations. It is likely that some type of infiltration will be required to meet these requirements. The proposed road culvert must be designed for the 25-year storm and one foot of free board for the 100-year storm. I believe the portion that I wanted to include specifically, though, was that the corb engineer permit will be required for the culvert if it is a USGS blue line. USGS-defined blue line streams require either a 50-foot or 100-foot buffer depending on the drainage area. The site is located at the top of a sub watershed and drains into four different directions. And so, this is to be addressed at the land disturbance permitting phase.
All right.
Staff recommends approval of the plan with the standard and specific requirements. Mr. Chairman.
Nobody's signed up to speak in opposition, and again, we have to put up with Paul Harrison. Why don't you just sit up here?
I don't, I mean, really. Paul Harrison, 718 Lounche Hill Road. I don't. I mean, this, this kind of goes back to the original application, or our first application that I talked about. It's in an unzoned area with public sewer, and we're meeting the requirements.
Article 22.
Of the article 22. And I would like to point out that we are, we, we are, we do have roughly 46% open space on the property. Open space meaning it's not a lot, it's not a road, it's not a stormwater pond. But still, that, that is a significant number. And we do have, we do have the parking for CBUs, and in that location is where the emergency access drive would, would come out. So, I, I think we've addressed everything with staff, and we understand the condition that was thrown up. That's a stormwater comment coming out of.
Sure.
From Ms. Judy. So, we're, we're well aware of that. But I, I'd be glad to answer any questions if, if the commission has any.
I can't read the tax map numbers. Where are the natural land conservation area? Which, which part of this is natural land conservation?
You're talking about from the.
Piedmont Community Plan.
I got the, I mean, I got a paper copy of the map.
Well, I mean, it has 704-1. I'm just curious what part of this is one and what part of it is the other.
Do you have a copy of that?
Parcel 704-1, or does that designate as natural land conservation? All the other is the. Oh, heck. I lost it. Suburban. Well, shoot, Paul, you're supposed to know this off the top of your head.
Oh, Steve.
It's not parcel, parcel, suburban. It's either, it's either suburban.
Sometimes it's hard to, the, the, the flu maps don't have parcel lines on them. They, they, you know, you can really, I mean, it's, the boundaries are basically roadways. It's hard to kind of determine how your site fits in there.
I'm just curious. One other quickie. Well, I thought the other was a quickie. You have no access to all this up here through the buffer? Should you have an access 20-foot?
You're talking about road?
No, access to all this open space up here.
It's right out the back of that cul-de-sac is all open space.
Well, but it's, don't you need to cut a hole through the buffer?
Well, I would assume I can have a walking trail inside the buffer.
It wasn't supposed to cross. It's supposed to.
It can cross straight.
Okay. All right, thank you. Just curious. Any other questions for the engineer?
I've got a question, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Phillips.
Paul, these four parcels. Looks like the owner's Colvin Construction. Are they part of a subdivision, single residential, commercial, vacant?
I think it's vacant. I think it's vacant land. It's just vacant property.
Really? Okay. Would you be willing to include? Because I don't see any noted walking trails to any of this, this open space. Include that as a condition for approval?
Is that something we could work with staff on?
Absolutely.
Okay. We'd be glad, we'd be glad to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Then how do you delineate it? We could go down a rabbit hole there in a minute. I know it, it's not. I agree. No, if you jump in there anytime you want, don't wait on us.
Well, I'm making a motion to approve with the following condition, that walking trails are incorporated for access to. From the front of the subdivision to pass of open space track B, A, and A. Actually, you got them all. B and A all over the plat, but.
Those are the big, the bigger, the, the bigger.
Yes, at the what? North.
Very north end, and then the. Just below the visitor and CBU, that, that area throughout there.
Can I get a second? Mr. Hammond has a second. Ms. Phillips made a motion to approve with the condition of adding walking trails at staff's discretion, basically. Mr. Hammond has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Nano.
All right. This is PP 2025-84, Acadia Phase Four. Acadia Phase Four is an addition to the Acadia subdivision in plan development, which is located south of I-185. The applicant is requesting 65 lots on 27.81 acres for a density of 2.34 units per acre. Here is the site outlined in red. And here is Forever Lane looking north and Forever Lane looking south. That's a street within the development. Here is the site plan that was submitted in your packets. The site includes two ingress egress points, including one through the existing prior phases of the Acadia PD, and a proposed new access along Freeman Lake Road, seven internal roads, one CBU area, and common areas with some green space throughout. Here is the zoning of the site. The subject property is part of the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan where it is designated as rural. Rural place types recommend a density of one dwelling unit per every two acres. The subject property is also a part of the Piedmont Community Plan where it is, it is partially designated as suburban and partially designated as natural land conservation. The suburban areas recommend a density of one to four dwelling units per acre, while natural land conservation areas recommend a density of zero to one dwelling units per acre. The site is additionally a part of the South Greenville Area Plan where it is designated as transitional residential with, which recommends a density of two to three dwelling units per acre. Acadia Phase Four proposes a density of 2.34 dwelling units per acre. Here is the site and across the street from the site. A traffic impact study was conducted for the proposed Acadia Phase Four residential development in accordance with SCDOT guidelines. The recommendations are as follows. Obtain necessary permits from Greenville County to construct the proposed Phase Four access road as shown on the plat on Freeman Lake Road. Consider using available pavement on Beach Bluff Way to designate a separate right turn lane on its approach to SC-153. An encroachment permit may be necessary from SCDOT if work occurs in the right-of-way on SC-153. The study concludes that the public roadway system serving the site can accommodate the anticipated traffic volumes generated by the proposed Acadia Phase Four residential development without further mitigation. SAC comments included from subdivision administration. This plan must match the approved final development plan. Currently, this plan does meet the final, match the final development plan that is on file with zoning administration. Staff recommends approval with conditions of the plan with the standard and specific requirements. The conditions of approval are as follows. Complete appropriate recommended traffic mitigations is outlined in the traffic impact study. Mr. Chairman.
All right, nobody's signed up in opposition. So, Caleb Freeman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Caleb Freeman. I am a resident at number one Keller's Gate Court in Piedmont, South Carolina. Happens to be inside the Acadia community. My wife and I live there, and I'm also the developer of the Acadia community. Like me, Acadia is not the oldest, but definitely not the youngest planned development. We were approved as a PD going back to 2005. So, we're here today, I'm here today to answer any questions. I'll pull a seat right here and let y'all talk about this. I believe we've already submitted, certainly with staff's recommendations as well, enough information to hopefully put into perspective where is Acadia, this community, in the perspective of our growth. We're basically not even halfway done towards our total density approval under our 300-acre site of 650 dwelling units. This 64 dwellings for this and the 65th is an amenity lot. So, we're actually proposing 64 dwelling sites for single-family homes in this fourth neighborhood of Acadia, and the other one is an amenity lot for the tennis courts, et cetera. I want to thank you very much, and I'm here for your questions.
Any questions for the developer? Would either of these other two gentlemen like to speak?
So, that's my son, John Freeman. He happens to be the most important partner in the Acadia development team. And another very important person is David Hall. He's our civil engineer that's represented us for quite a few years, and they are back benching today.
Is there any questions? Do we need the engineer? Anybody got a motion?
Mr. Chairman make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right. Mr. Hammond has a motion to approve. Mr. Wood has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
Thank you.
That was quick.
This is PP 2025-85, Marion Square. This was previously approved as PP 2024-19. Marion Square is an option-one cluster development located north of the intersection of Highway 25 and West Blue Ridge Drive in Berea. The applicant is requesting 159 lots at, at a density of 5.2 units per acre in the RM20 multifamily residential zoning district. Access is provided off of Emile Street, which is a county road. This application was previously approved by the Planning Commission under PP 2022-122, and for a minor revision related to lowering the lot count and shifting some stormwater management ponds under PP 2024-19, as well as PP 2023-54. This current request is to remove the previously approved pool and amenity on site. Here is the site outlined in red. And here is Emile Street looking northwest and southeast. Here is the site plan that was submitted in your packets. The project includes one access point, one hidden emergency access, five internal access roads and sidewalks, one mail kiosk that shares 20 parking spaces, and 20-foot undisturbed screening buffers, as well as 14.67 acres of open space. Here is the zoning of the site. The site is located within the traditional neighborhood floodplain and open space area of the Comprehensive Plan. Traditional neighborhoods have a recommended density of six to 20 dwelling units per acre. Here is the site and across the street from the site. Regarding SAC comments, all SAC comments were addressed at the resubmital. Staff recommends approval of the plan with the standard and specific requirements. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Statean. Nobody signed up in opposition, and Charles Green is our only speaker for, in favor.
Sorry, I have bad handwriting. This is Charles Greer. We're seeing my side, address 366, Unit 21 Circle. Nothing's changing on the site plan, other than the fact that the developer wanted to change the pool amenity to an open space amenity to be a park. That's really it. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Ms. Manning has a question.
So, all you're doing at this point right now is just eliminating the pool, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. They're just switching it from, instead of being a pool and a clubhouse, it's just going to be an open space activated park.
Just for curi-, why, why are you doing that? Just for curiosity's sake?
That's, that's up to the builder and the developer. I really just representing them.
No, 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 just, just asking the question.
I think the builder changed along the way, and they decided that the pool wasn't warranted.
Great, and that's going to then be open space?
Mm-hmm.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
None in your business.
It's not gonna always ask.
Any other questions? Motion's?
Motion. Motion to approve.
All right.
I'll second.
Ms. Manning made a motion to approve. There's no conditions, are there?
No.
Okay. And Mr. Hammond, not Hammond.
Crap.
Holland. Same thing. Has a second. Getting tired. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You might as well stay there.
I might, I might as well.
At least I know your name.
This is PP 2025-87, Hartness Village Square. Hartness Village is a proposed additional phase of the Hartness Plan Development located north of the intersection of SC Highway 14 and Society Street. The applicant, applicant is requesting 69 lots on 7.08 acres for a density of 9.74 units per acre, as well as an additional commercial parcel with parking areas for the two existing commercial parcels and the proposed commercial parcels as well. Access is provided off of Society Street. Here is the site outlined in red. And here is Alister Square looking east and looking west. Here is the site plan that was submitted in your packets. This, this section of Hartness will, will have four connections into the existing Hartness Development, one mailbox kiosk, one trash facility to support the commercial uses, a parking lot with 104 parking spaces, 24 parallel parking spaces, and two spaces for each single-family lot to be provided via either driveways or garages. Hartness Village also includes 0.62 acres of open space, 0.06 acres of common area, a 25-foot undeveloped buffer. a 25-foot undeveloped buffer along the eastern development boundary line, and a 45-foot undeveloped landscape buffer along SC Highway 14. Here is the zoning of the site. The subject site is a part of the Greenville County Comprehensive Plan where it is designated as suburban neighborhood. This character area type recommends a density of three to five dwelling units per acre. Hartness Village proposes a density of 9.74 units per acre within this portion of the overall development. Here is the site and across the street from the site. All SAC comments were addressed at the resubmital, and staff recommends approval of the plan with the standard and specific requirements. Mr. Chairman?
All right, nobody in opposition. Mr. Greer.
Charles Greer, 366 Unit prevent circle. So we've worked with Hartness and the PD and the master plan and staff to get here, and we have an approved FDP that we've worked with zoning on. We added an extra buffer along Highway 14 to satisfy, you know, any concerns about traffic from Highway 14 and noise in the subdivision. So I think we landed where we all can agree that this would be a pretty good plan. There will be two additional commercial buildings added into the already existing two commercial buildings right there, right in the entrance of Hartness Master Plan. We are going to be doing underground detention for the commercial portion, and then the residential portion will actually go to an existing pond that has been designed to take this into consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Manning has a question.
So this looks like it's all, all it is is simply an extension of an existing development, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Good to know, thank you.
That was easy.
I've got a motion to approve.
Well, I got one quick one. Traffic signal, Moore Road when warranted, traffic signal, 14 and Society, when warranted, who defines when warranted? The DOT?
Who, DOT? It's just D O T.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Well, mine was easy too.
There we go.
Yeah, I know, it's just a when warranted. They've done everything, so. All right, Ms. Manning, we gotta get rid of developable and undevelopable. We've got to. This is just, I don't even see why we even have it.
Want to give us a second?
Side comment.
Want to give us a second?
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I just gave you a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Manning made a motion. We're tired of Ms. Manning made a motion to approve. Ms. Franklin has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye's got it.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is VA 2025-83, 2624 Point Set Highway, 10.3.5 screening and buffer variance. The applicant is requesting a variance from LDR Section 10.3.5, which requires a 15-foot landscape buffer along the exterior property line adjacent to residential use, as well as screening of six feet in height. The applicant is requesting a variance from the buffer and screening requirements due to the fact that the building on-site is currently directly on the property line. According to the applicant, the building is over 50 years old. The applicant also states that the adjacent parcel is HOA open space land for subdivision, and includes a forest area that acts as a buffer from the building, with the nearest residential structure being approximately 310 feet away. Here is the site plan that was included in your packets. And here is an image of the site. SAC comments from Land Development Division. The county GIS indicates that this site has encroached on the adjoining property owned by Trayburn HOA with gravel and some other items. These encroachments need to be removed from the HOA common area and stabilized with vegetation. No other comments were provided at the subdivision advisory committee on this application. Staff recommends approval with conditions of the variance as requested with the following condition. Remedy the encroachments onto the HOA common area and stabilize the vegetation in this area prior to completion of additional, any additional work on-site. Mr. Chairman?
All right, nobody has signed up in opposition or in favor. I've got a quick question for staff. I'm still confused. Why didn't BZA see this? Here we go.
I am here. They did. The BZA did see this previously, so they've already taken care of the variance from the zoning ordinance. So now the variance from the LDR.
Ah, I got you, thank you, okay.
It's that lovely clause in the beginning.
Make a motion to approve.
I second.
Mr. Hammond made a motion to approve. Mr., keep forgetting your name. Let's see here. Holland made a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Aye's got it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is VA 2025-91 at 290 Rocky Creek Road. It's a 10.3.7 HVAC screening variance. The applicant is requesting a variance from LDR Section 10.3.7, which requires rooftop equipment to be screened by a parapet or other architectural element that is equal to the maximum elevation of the equipment and is complementary to the building's architecture. The applicant states that they would, that they are installing a rooftop flush solar system on-site. The applicant states that the variance is necessary because the screening, because screening the system would impact the functionality of the system, because it would block the lights that it uses to produce energy. In addition, the applicant states that the module will lay flush to the roof, and the additional screening would appear more noticeable than the solar system itself. Here is an outlined image of the site. And here is a view of the site from the public right-of-way. No comments were provided at subdivision advisory committee on this application. Staff recommends approval of the variance as requested. Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you, Ms. Stateen. We have Chris Walsh signed up in favor. No one in opposition.
Yeah, Chris Walsh, just representing the installation company.
Oh, okay.
I just kind of put my name down there, just, I don't know, I don't really know how this, all this works, that's.
No, you did the right thing. Any questions for the installer?
I've just got one. The solar array will lay flat, and it won't have a tilt at all to it?
Yes, sir, that's correct. It tilts with the roof, it's a slanted roof, but it lays flat against the roof. Gotcha.
Look how far back into this place it is, so it's.
I do have one comment. For future projects in the area, is there any, I don't know what the proper term is, any kind of rubber stamp or any kind of?
Yeah, just keep coming to us.
Just keep doing this?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we love it.
Yeah, we love it.
All right, thank you.
I have nothing better to do.
Mr. Chairman, I will say that in any, hopefully, future ordinances we have, we have taken this specific thing into consideration with regards to knowing that it is kind of a burden on development. So any future, hopefully, future ordinances that will come online, we'll be taking that into consideration.
Well, I see it all over the place on other stores' places, too, so.
So hopefully, hopefully, that will be the case moving forward.
I hope so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve this variance request.
I second.
Ooh, new people here.
There we go.
Let's see. Ms. Phillips made a motion to approve. Mr. Parham has the second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On the, what was in the packet, it appeared that there were going to be panels on the roofs of four buildings?
That's correct.
The one, obviously, that's closest to Rocky Creek Road is a sloped roof, we could see that from the photo. Are the other ones also sloped roofs?
Three of the four are. The very back northeast roof is a flat mounted roof. Or it's a roof of the flat pitch. Those are also flat mounted.
Well, I didn't see the one up front.
All right. And then a question for staff. If this is approved, would it be strictly limited to the buildings and the layout that's on the plans that were in the packet? Or does it open it up to additional panels being placed on additional roofs on the property?
My understanding is it's just what's shown on the site plan in the packet.
Okay, so just on those four particular locations?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. And thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we got a motion to approve. I've already said what and who and where. Any other further discussion? Ms. Phillips is giving me a finger.
Yes, my partner over here.
You got a partner? What?
Do we, do we need to amend?
Do we need to amend my motion to specify the four buildings?
Well, what I'll say is that typically.
Because what we see is not specific.
Typically, when these come up, they've already, they come up because they've submitted a building permit.
Right.
And it's called at that point, and staff says, oh, you're going to have to go before planning commission to seek a variance. So this is the site plan that will be going through the building permit process. So even if it is, I mean, obviously, this might, this is not just the entire architectural set of drawings, but it is the plan that will be going through that process. So it is what is being presented as their building permit.
Is there a reason we're not provided with more detail?
What, what detail would you like additionally?
I mean, so in this case, what buildings, where?
There were some drawings in the packet.
I see them, but, you know, exactly where?
Verbage.
Maybe more specific verbiage, I don't know.
Okay, I see it now.
Because we're kind of approving generalizations.
And it does say roof array C as well, so.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Oh, I see.
For these type of applications, if you'd like to see something more specific, we can, we can update our procedures to be more stringent, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
So no, I don't want to amend.
Good. All right, we had a motion to approve and a second, and I already forgot who did what, when, where. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, it passes. Reconsideration of Logan Reserve. I'm going to read this again in our bylaws. You got some? The commission may reconsider any review when so requested by the governing body or when an applicant brings to the attention of the commission new facts, a mistake of fact in the original review, correction of a clerical error, or matters not the fault of the applicant that affect the result of the review. During the motion to deny, the commissioner said the reason for the motion to deny was traffic. They were not specific as to what, and it's got a traffic study, I mean, so I admit I didn't catch it. I should have said we can't state traffic as a concern, you know, we have to be specific as to the LDR and the zoning ordinance. So I'm asking that we reconsider this, and if we do approve the reconsideration, we will see it next month. So we admit we, I guess, not a clerical mistake of fact, so.
Was it also denied? I have a question for you, Mr. Chairman.
It was denied, yes.
But for other reasons as well? Does one validate the other? I mean, are they, just because one was wrong or the other's wrong?
It should have never been said, and it should have been more specific, and I should have caught it. So, I mean, I admit we could have handled that better.
According to the minutes, the denial was based on LDR 11.4, 11.1, and 11.3.2. I don't believe traffic is involved in any of those. I'm not understanding why we should be reconsidering this.
I don't have the minutes in front of me, but there was.
I do.
She's correct.
There was another paragraph above or below it.
It was, Ms. Manning, to deny based on inadequate, but it was substantiated which LDR references it was being denied on, and traffic was not one of them.
But she brought up traffic. The cluster references was per cluster. The other one, it said deny for traffic. Does it not say that?
I think that's part of the discussion.
It was a discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
We can discuss, we just have a lot of discussions. But that doesn't constitute a denial or a, an approval.
Can I see that for a second?
I mean, I asked a lot of questions.
No, let me see. It's going to slide your mic. Hold on. I'll give you. Yeah, that one needs to make. There's a name on it. That looks like it. Yes. It's right here. Oh. Right here, right here. I have a Senate to hand a photo to. It was somewhere. And traffic concerns. It says it right there. Mr. Chairman, would you like for us to pull this up on screen?
No, I'll see. Does anybody else need to say it? I just, I'm admitting that we both should have handled it better. You all can do what you want.
Mr. Chairman, I, based on the fact that this is a, an issue, maybe we need to let them come back and reconsider, so that we can put this to bed.
All right, you make a motion?
I make a motion that we reconsider at next month's meeting, with the condition that the public is notified again, so that we can have everybody here.
They will be.
No changes to the application, the original application.
Right. The original application that was presented last month.
But they have the right to bring other drawings.
Yeah.
New?
Yeah.
I disagree with that.
That's a change, too.
No, that's not a change. You're not changing the application. The public will be notified, and the public will have the opportunity to view any new, new drawings that don't change the application.
Do they have to go out and put up signs?
I hope they put up signs.
Not in the process.
What do you mean that's not in the process?
It's, there's nothing in the system for a process that tells, I mean, where staff initiates that sort of thing.
Well, if it's being reconsidered, how's the public going to know we're going to reconsider next month?
Why don't we ask staff?
That's what I was getting ready. Can we ask staff to make sure the signs are back out there?
I mean, if you decide to go forward with that, we would require public notice prior to it being heard at a meeting.
Good, thank you.
And how much of a public notice would they get?
It would be signs on the site, and then it would be included in the agenda and then on our website.
How soon would the signs go up?
They have to be up for 15 days prior to any public meeting.
Be like any public.
Right.
That's right.
All right, Mr. Holland made a motion to approve reconsideration for Logan Reserve. Anybody got a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammond has a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Since I was not here, I will abstain from this vote.
All right, you don't have to.
I know.
Okay. Lost my train of thought. Any further discussion? All in favor to approve reconsideration of Logan Reserve, raise your hand. Those who are in opposition, all right. You got that, Nicole?
Got it.
All right, we will re-see it, along with any amendments, next month. All right, I guess you're the new guy.
With that said.
That's a nice introduction.
This chair members of planning commission, I would like to introduce Draper Carlisle. He is on day three of being with us, so I'll turn it over to him for the planning report.
When will he be back for day four?
I plan to be.
I don't think he's going, he's just going to just hang out here.
I might just sleep in my office tonight.
Well, we've had, you know, former employees that have done that, so.
Always an option. No, I'm pleased to be here. Like Josh said, I've been here for about three days now. It's going well, I have good staff around me, good support, and I'm learning a lot. They're showing me the ropes, so glad to be here, glad to be here tonight with you all. Let's just give a brief overview of some of the things that these items are in your packet, so I hope you've read them, but just a couple of the highlights. From long-range planning, the final draft of the five-year review of the 2020 comp plan is complete, is under internal review, and we'll bring that to you once that's finished. Additionally, staff has also moved the new open space plan to the final review stage, so moving along there on those two items.[1773.83] there on those two items. For transportation planning, the next meeting of the GPAT study team will be on July 14th, and will focus on the upcoming long-range transportation plan revision. And then also for the fiscal year 2026-2027 Unified Planning Work Program has been approved by the GPAT's Policy Committee and SCDOT, the Federal Highway Administration, and the Federal Transit Administration. So they're just waiting on their chairman's signature and looking on implementing that. Their next meeting will be held on August 25th, so that's coming up. And then lastly, we have more new staff. Julie Confer, also here to my left, she's our new admin support specialist for zoning, so clearly she's going to be providing support in that way, so preparing meeting agendas, zoning verifications, being the public face there at our counter. She's also going to be succeeding Nicole.
No!
As taking minutes for Planning Commission and other meetings.
No!
We didn't scare off anybody.
When is the five-year comp plan coming to us? I mean, we, we have to recommend approval, don't we?
That's right.
Do we? This is called ARM. You do this. Well, that's true. Throw things at me. Let's try this again. I forgot what I was going to say. Are we going to not, should we not have more than a week to review this thing? I mean, when can we see the final comp plan, the five-year?
Well, we'd bring it to you as part of a regular Planning Commission meeting.
Yeah, but that gives us one week, along with all the other stuff that we have to review.
We can give you some additional notes. We can bring it to you earlier, and then bring it the next meeting, get it to you in advance. That's not a problem.
That'd be nice.
So you can take a look at it.
The open space plan, who's in charge of that now? I think I asked that question earlier.
That's long range.
Jonathan Hannah, he's the long-range planning.
Oh, okay. I was looking at it today. Go to acknowledgements and see how many boo-boos. Well, this is Liz, Greenville City Council. Dan Tripp, Greenville City Council.
The sheriff says city, not seat.
That's right, I wear council, too.
I can ask whoever wants to leave. No, I just, open space plan, it's, with all this going on with open space, what is the open space plan going to do?
I haven't had a chance to review it. Do you want to speak to that?
I mean, I haven't either. This is something that was, that was in the works, and I think it's kind of, there's been several workshops on it, but.
Yeah, and I could never attend.
Yeah, we've had, we've had some consultants on it. I've not really had much involvement in it, and it's been more Jonathan and the long-range staff.
Okay. Sure. Mr. Parham?
What's the intent of the, I mean, the open space plan currently, does it exist as something new, as part of the comprehensive plan?
It is new. It is, it is something new.
But it's going to stand on?
Yeah, it is, it is something that was recommended from the 2020 comprehensive plan, so, and it was something to bring on from that. So it was one of the.
I'm sorry. No, it was. It was a Rashida thing.
And so we will get the final draft when of the updated comprehensive plan?
I know it's of the comprehensive.
I got you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ah, we got it.
I know. We will get that to you as soon as possible. You don't have to approve it at the next meeting. We'll get it to you in advance, and then we'll schedule when it appears on your meeting for.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Probably, yeah. We're, we're almost done with our internal review, so.
After us.
So council might want workshops, they might golly-dally with it, and argue about it for a few months.
And then as far as the open space plan, there have been a lot of stakeholders that were involved in that. We, our rec district was heavily involved in it, as well as a lot of the conservation groups, State Forever. There's been a lot of input by the parties that, you know, are, have a vested interest in preserving open space in the county.
So if it's not synonymous with the cluster?
No, not at all. Has nothing to do with cluster. Correct. It's simply about preserving the green in Greenville.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any new business? Any old business? Hearing none, we're adjourned.